Good afternoon. There will be two hearings today, one starting now at 3:00, and then there will be one at 6:00 p.m. For those folks who were on it, you can't hear at 3:00. My name is Joe Fearliso, and I'm a Commissioner on the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, and I have been designated to serve as the Presiding Officer of this matter. The time and place for this public hearing was published in newspapers and general circulation within the service territory of South Jersey Gas Company. The purpose of this public hearing is to take comments on a petition filed by South Jersey Gas in the matter of the petition of South Jersey Gas Company for a determination pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 40:55D-19, and it's the Board of Public Utilities docket number G S N G R O S N OUT 13111049. South Jersey Gas filed this petition on or out October 31, 2013, requesting that the Board of Public Utilities issue an order pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-19, which is New Jersey's municipal land use law. The petition asks the Board to find that the construction of the natural gas pipeline through Morris River Township in Cundling County, City of Estelle Manor in the Atlantic County, and Upper Township in Cape May County, New Jersey, is reasonably necessary for the service, convenience, or welfare of the public. If the Board makes that fine, then the zoning, site plan review, and all other municipal land use ordinances and regulations of those towns under the municipal land use law of New Jersey shall not apply to this pipeline. The Board will be ruling solely on the land use matter, specifically whether local zoning laws will apply to this project. By order dated December 18, 2013, the Board retained this matter for hearing and designated me as the Presiding Officer with the authority to establish and modify schedules, decide all motions, and otherwise control the conduct of this case, subject to Board ratification. The public hearing was previously held on this petition on December 18, 2013, right here in Upper Township. South Jersey Gas has filed other petitions related to the proposed project. South Jersey Gas filed a petition with the Board on March 8, 2013, for authority pursuant to NJAC 14:7-1.4 to install and operate the proposed pipeline, including those sections passing within 100 feet of buildings intended for human occupancy. A public hearing was conducted on that petition on May 1, 2013, also here in Upper Township. By order dated June 21, 2013, the Board authorized the construction of the proposed pipeline as proposed by South Jersey Gas. On October 20, 2014, South Jersey Gas filed a petition for an amended order requesting two changes to the Board's order of June 21, 2013. One, that a provision be added that no new customers could be connected to the pipeline within the area designated as the forest area under the Pinelands Comprehensive Management Plan. And two, that the Board approve a change to the location of the point of interconnection and the regulator station from Marshall Avenue in Upper Township to Mount Pleasant, Tuckahoe Row in Upper Township, which moved the regulator station from the forest area of the Pinelands to a less restricted area of the Pinelands outside of the forest area. The public hearing was conducted on Note 2, requested amendments on June 17, 2015, also here in Upper Township. The Board granted South Jersey Gas's request for an amended order on July 22, 2015. As stated, this matter will come back to the Board to vote on the application as to whether the zoning and municipal land use ordinances of the three towns where the pipeline has been approved do not apply. Nevertheless, this hearing is available for you to express all of your views. I am open to receiving all of your comments and statements today. All statements made at this hearing are being scenographically recorded, from which a typed transcript will be produced and made part of the record, which shall be available for review by all members of the Board of Public Utilities. In addition, a copy of the transcript of this public hearing will be provided to the Pinelands Commission staff at their request for their review of the statements made at this public hearing. As a matter of procedure for today's hearing, first I will ask the parties to this matter to place their appearances on the record and afford them an opportunity to make a short opening statement should they choose to do so. Then I will open the record to any members in the public who wish to make a statement for the record. Again, signing sheets are at the lectern, so if you'd like to speak, I ask that you sign it. Anyone who wishes to make a statement for the record, as I indicated, should sign it. It's not necessary to make a statement. If you have written comments, you can submit those instead of making a verbal statement. We appreciate your attendance here for this hearing. As this is a quasi-judicial matter, this hearing is very similar to a proceeding that might find in a court of law. Accordingly, it is expected that the same decorum that is expected in a court of law will be exhibited at this hearing. There is also a practical reason for comments not being made unless you are making them at the lectern. Since it is being scenographically recorded here, the court reporter has to be able to hear the individuals making their statements so that every word is included in the transcript. When you do come up to speak, I would ask that you identify yourself, and if you wouldn't mind spelling your last name so that it may be more correct in the record, and also indicate any affiliation you may have or any group you may be representing. With all of that long stuff being said, I will now ask the parties to state their appearances for the record. South Jersey Gas.
Thank you, Commissioner Iver Leggeld, a member of the firm of Jacob McHonor. I'm the head of South Jersey Gas.
Thank you. Ray Council.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Henry Ogden, Assistant Deputy Ray Council for the New Jersey Division of Ray Council.
Board of Staff.
Director Paul Fannigan, Executive Director on behalf of the Staff of the Board of Public Utilities.
Good. Is there anybody I missed? Okay. To the order of statements of appearances, do any of the parties wish to make a short opening statement? Doctor. Yes, Commissioner, very briefly. First, if I may, I would like to present to you a certificate of service indicating publication of notice of this hearing in newspapers of general circulation and mailing to appropriate officials. Thank you. Commissioner, in terms of the posture of the procedure, I think you did an extremely thorough job explaining it, and I won't go into that. I would just note for the party present that the Pinelands Commission did post a notice on its website stating that comments pertaining to the Pinelands Comprehensive Management Plan may be submitted as part of these hearings today, and that the transcript of the hearing will be provided to the Pinelands Commission. In terms of the scope of this proceeding, I think you spelled it out very thoroughly. I would only point out that I have here, for the benefit and interest of those present, a map which they can refer to, which depicts the pipeline in question. The pipeline is a 24-inch pipeline commencing in Morris River Township and running through Estelle Manor and Upper Township. The pipeline starts at the proposed Carmelton Pond Station and continues on to the interconnection point, that is what we call the reliability line. Then the dedicated line continues from the interconnection point and terminates at the proposed BL England generating station. There are various above-ground facilities in both Morris River Township and in Upper Township which would be subject to local land use approvals if this petition is not granted. If it is granted, they will not be subject to those approvals. As I said, the line is bifurcated into a proposed reliability line, which is to serve and provide reliability of service to South Jersey Gas Company's customers, and a dedicated line which will be used so to provide natural gas to the BL England pipeline. And that's all I have. Thank you. Ray Council?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon. My name is Henry Ogden. I'm an Assistant Deputy to Ray Council representing the New Jersey Division of Ray Council. Our office was created by the New Jersey Legislature to represent all New Jersey rate payers in matters involving public utility rates and services. As you've heard, the proposed pipeline will run through three communities and terminate at the BL England facility. And as you just heard from Counsel for the Company, the project is -- part of the line is meant to provide reliability to customers in Atlantic and Cape May Counties, and part of it is a dedicated line to providing new gas to the BL England facility. While South Jersey Gas is not seeking to raise rates at this time, they will eventually seek cost recovery of the reliability portion of the pipeline in a future rate proceeding. Our office will then conduct a complete investigation of the company's petition based upon the information supplied and updated by the company, and we will retain the services of expert consultants to assist us in our review. Then our inquiry will be focused on the issue of whether the company constructed the pipeline in a prudent and reasonable fashion so that the rate payers will pay the lowest rates possible, consistent with receiving safe, adequate, and proper service for the appropriate portion of the reliability line. The dedicated BL England pipeline will be paid for by the owners of that facility, and the Board of Public Utilities will ultimately make the final decision regarding the utilities request for a base rate adjustment. So the purpose of today's hearing is for you to voice your opinions relating to this petition and the company, and as you just heard, the hearings being transcribed and your comments will become part of the record. So Ray Council also needs to hear your views, so it is important that you do express them today. Thank you very much for attending today, and we look forward to hearing your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Staff, any comments?
Just go ahead and have a seat.
Thank you. I'm going to now open the hearing before public comment, and again, let me just remind you, when you come up to speak, and I will work off the list that I have here, please state your name, and if you will, spell your last name so that the stenographer can get it correctly, and that it's recorded in the transcript correctly. There is no time limit on how long you can speak. I do ask, however, that you're conscious of the fact that there are a number of people who would like to speak, so I would appreciate it if your comments would be pointed directly toward the reason we're here today, and be as brief as you possibly can. Again, written comments will be accepted. Written comments are put in the record just like verbal comments are put in the record. So you're not being, quote, "cheap," if you will, if you don't say something, because if you send written comments, they will be included in the record. If you don't have written comments with you today, the Board will be accepting written comments on this petition, and our copies of your comments may be submitted to the Board Secretary, Ivy Kim K I M Asbury, as I know her, at the Board of Public Utilities at 44 South Clinton Avenue, 9th floor, Post Office Box 350, Trenton, New Jersey, 08625-0350. You can also email comments, and they should be submitted, if you choose to get on the record that way, to board secretary at vpu.state nj.us. And with written or email comments, please include the name of the petition and the docket number in your correspondence when submitting those comments. And Ivy Kim, tell me, docket number is G O 13111049, and it's in the matter of petition of South Jersey Gas Company for a determination pursuant to the provision of NJSA 40:55D-19. First person on my list is Jeff Tittle. And let me apologize right from the start. If I mispronounced your name, it's because it's not as easy to pronounce as Fearliso.
Thank you. You got my name right, a lot of people get it wrong. Jeff Tittle, Director, New Jersey Sierra Club. And we're here today to ask the Board of Public Utilities to reject this application. We believe that there are serious concerns and problems with this application from the beginning. This application originally, which has been now approved by the VPU in different forms about three times, was originally rejected a little over a year ago by the Pinelands Commission. They came in under a memorandum of agreement, and it was voted down by that commission. They had the option to come in for waivers, strict compliance, and chose not to, and now we see a game being played at the Pinelands Commission that now puts it back at the VPU. And the concern that we have is that the determination on this project was made only by the Pinelands Commission Executive Director, not by the commission itself, and we believe that at best she erred when looking at the law and the facts, at worst, we think there may be undue political interference going on here and why this pipeline is being pushed. It was rejected by the commission, and now it's coming back as a private development. The reason I'm bringing these things onto the record is because I think it impacts what happens here today with this petition. So even though it's a public utility and under New Jersey law, it's given -- South Jersey Gas is given special consideration, but coming in as a private development, they don't fit the definition of a private development. Under their application at the Pinelands, which was all of a sudden, you know, same facts, but now a different outcome, I don't know how that can happen, that at the Board of Public Utilities, they're here as a reliability project, which means it serves the people outside the Pines, not just inside the Pines. At the Pinelands, under the definition that the executive director is using, it's not only a private development which doesn't fit, it's also for use primarily within the Pines. But as a reliability project for Atlantic and Cape May County, by definition, that's not the case. The other part, the other problem that we have with that determination is that since this project's primary purpose is to serve the BL England power plant, and that goes into the PJM grid, how could that serve primarily the Pinelands? Now, the executive director of the Pinelands Commission tried to justify it saying that Atlantic Electric serves 34 towns and Pinelands. The problem is that this is an emergent plant that sells into the grid, and there is no contract with Atlantic Electric. Therefore, it does not serve the Pines. And so we believe, based on that alone, that the memorandum of agreement that allows Pinelands Commission to give you authority on this is invalid, and this hearing should either not happen or you should vote down this application based on that. The BL England plant itself, where there's a lot of misinformation, is a plant that is only currently operating at about 60 days a year. There's a consent order in place. This plant is supposed to close. It's been extended and extended. There are people who say, well, it's going to be cleaner. It will not be cleaner, and the reason it will not be cleaner is because currently it's basically a peaking plant 60 days a year. They want to make it a 24/7, 365 day a year facility. So based just on carbon dioxide alone and methane, this plant will actually produce 400 to 500 times, 400 to 500 percent more pollution during the course of a year of operation. Five to six times more pollution will be coming out of that plant. Plus, the water pollution, since two of the units do not have cooling towers, will also increase by a similar amount because the water being going through once cooling impacting and important estuary impacting fisheries. On top of that, PJM, the regional grid operator, has already said that they can, for a couple of minor changes that they had to do anyway, they don't need this plant. And this region unfortunately isn't growing because of what's happened in Atlantic City. So we're building a speculative plant where we don't even know if there are going to be customers for it. They have not gone into the PJM auction for new capacity. So we don't even know if there's anybody going to bid on this new plant. And yet, we're going to spend rate payer money to build a pipeline that, at all it should be built, it should be paid by BL England or the Bottles without Jersey Gas and should not be paid for by the rate payers at all. And on one hand, they're saying it's for reliability for the region; on the other hand, it's a private development. You can't have it both ways. And so we believe that this application is the wrong application at the wrong time and the wrong place, and we also believe that it'll cause irreparable harm to the Pinelands. If you can justify this pipeline, then you can justify any pipeline, and there'll be more coming. We have the New Jersey Natural Gas Pipeline, there'll be more. And so our concern is that the Board of Public Utilities is becoming the Board of Promoting Pipelines, and that the Pinelands Law is, instead of being the Pinelands Protection Act, is becoming the Pinelands Pipeline. We believe that the future of the Pinelands is at stake, because once we go down this path and we allow for these kinds of manipulations and changes in policy without legal justification, we could have almost anything. But the next definition of private development, you know, who knows? Maybe we'll have a private highway one side of the Pinelands to another, or an incinerator, or even a casino, whatever. It opens up a Pandora's box. We're also concerned that even though I know you, as an individual, have tremendous concerns about the environment, that is not your job. You look at the environment only narrowly in energy perspective and not from the broad Pinelands perspective, and the impact that this will have to aquifers, to endangered species, to water supply. But even on that narrow environmental basis, this plant will increase pollution, this pipeline will increase pollution, this pipeline itself will increase pollution and will be a threat to the region from a safety standpoint. The Pinelands itself has forest fires occurring as part of nature, and you're putting a pipeline through it. That's a disaster waiting to happen. And so we believe that you should reject this application. We also believe that we passed the Pinelands Act for the Pinelands Commission to have a vote on something like this, not for a staff person doing. We also believe that towns should have input too, and that we believe that you should reject this application because we believe it's wrong for the Pinelands, it's wrong for energy policy in New Jersey. And by the way, Unit 1 at BL England has been closed for a year now, and no one's missed it. So we can get along with clean energy without this pipeline, without this power plant. There are four other power plants coming on in New Jersey: Seawarn, West Stepford, Newark, and Old Bridge. This plant isn't necessary. At the same time, you say this power plant may be needed for this region. PSENG, which operates Salem, and other power plants are at the PJM to build another line across the Delaware River to take more power out of state. So again, I think part of your job in looking at this application is to look at it from an overall energy standpoint. This power plant and this pipeline means more greenhouse gases, more fracking, more climate impacts, undercuts our ability to have offshore wind and solar as well as energy efficiency. And quite frankly, we've always believed that the BL England site would be a perfect place for a facility for onshore support for offshore wind. So from a standpoint at the thousand-foot deal with climate change to all the way down to the ground level with the pipeline going through people's backyard, this application should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tittle. Deborah DiLorenzo?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Thank you for coming back to South Jersey. My name is Deborah DiLorenzo, that's D I capital L O R E N Z O, and I am the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce Southern New Jersey. Thank you for allowing me to speak today in support of the Cape May and Atlantic Counties' Reliability Pipeline Project. As you have heard today and in prior hearings, this project will provide enhanced resiliency for 142,000 businesses and residents, and help convert an aging and outdated BL England plant to a state-of-the-art, efficient, and cleaner power generator. Our organization fully supports this project for several reasons. As a state, our public policy efforts should be focused on investing in our energy infrastructure, and by allowing this project to move forward, system reliability and reinforcement enhancements for customers in Cape May and Atlantic Counties would be provided. It cannot be underscored that the existing South Jersey Gas system has only one natural gas transmission pipeline that provides gas to Cape May and parts of Atlantic Counties. An interruption of service for any reason would be devastating to residents and businesses in South Jersey. I can speak directly to the impact of an interruption of service as I was personally and professionally affected by Superstorm Standing. My house sustained substantial damage, as did our family business. It is not just natural gas reliability, however, that we should be concerned about. The issue of electric energy reliability in the southeastern portion of New Jersey becomes an even bigger issue in the not-so-distant future when Worcester Creek Generating Station closes. Absent significant electric system improvements, generator retirements reduce system reliability. Therefore, it is imperative that we explore methods such as this natural gas pipeline to keep the BL England plant in operation to increase the reliability in Cape May and Atlantic region. South Jersey Gas's proposal does exactly this. The proposed pipeline provides South Jersey with both electric and natural gas reliability at a crucial time. Simply put, this project will provide residents and businesses with safe and reliable energy. And lastly, I would be remiss if I did not remind everyone that this pipeline will replace the burning of coal and fuel oil and repower the BL England plant with much cleaner natural gas. This conversion is something that many environmental groups have been advocating for some quite some time. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce Southern New Jersey and our member companies, we urge the VPU to support this indispensable investment in infrastructure to protect our region's economy, improve air quality while not damaging the integrity of the Pinelands, and provide much-needed jobs. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Michael, you too. Michael Leggerton.
Thank you, Commissioner Fierbeliso, Mike Leggerton, E-G-E-N-T-O-N. I'm the Senior Vice President, Government Relations with the New Jersey State Chamber of Commerce. The State Chamber has long been a longtime supporter of this project, and I'm here to again voice our strong support. I will be brief, as I've been before at this board before with our position. As you know, Commissioner, I currently serve on the New Jersey Clean Air Council at DUB. I was appointed by Governor Christine Todd Whitman, and was reappointed by Governors DeFrancesco, Cody, Corzine, and most recently, Governor Chris Christie. I've sat in as the Clean Air Council has discussed this project and its benefits for more than three years. I'm currently serving my 20th year on the Clean Air Council. Converting this power plant to a clean-burning natural gas facility creates a win on many fronts. It will improve air quality and public health, it will reduce costs for the old burden taxpayer, it will ensure energy reliability for the southern region of New Jersey, and it will provide a boost to the economy and job creation, all the while avoiding damage to our environment. Aside from a reliable supply of natural gas to the region, Cape May Energy Center, formerly known as B.L. England, is located in a critical electric congestion area, and is the only significant electricity generator in southeastern New Jersey. Studies have shown that Cape May Energy Center is needed to support the electric reliability needs of homes and businesses in this portion of the state. The need for the facility to stay online is crucial in providing significant electric reliability for our citizens and business owners. This is only exacerbated by the 2019 retirement of the Oyster Creek Nuclear Generating Station. This pipeline will provide the area with safe and reliable energy, make homeowners in the area less vulnerable to a surge outage, and will reduce air pollution as an outline in the state's 2011 Energy Master Plan and as required in air pollution regulations. It will deliver these benefits by running under an existing highway with minimal environmental impact. The New Jersey State Chamber of Commerce strongly urges the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities to approve this critical project. Again, thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity to allow us to provide our views. Thank you very much for your comments.
Ernest Bricks.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Ernest. My name is Ernest Bricks, a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and the Chair of the Energy and Environmental Committee of the Southern New Jersey Development Council, an eight-county economic development organization founded in 1951 to represent the interests of both the public and private sectors, and for whom I am appearing today at this hearing. I'm here to support the petition of the South Jersey Gas Company to construct the 22-mile gas pipeline, provide standby natural gas service to customers in Cape May and Atlantic Counties, and especially for repowering B.L. England's electricity generating facility, Unit 3 at this point. There are several points related to the application for the alternative gas line to England that should remain in a forefront of consideration for this action. Superstorm Sandy demonstrated across the state the need to have safer wireless service for water, electricity, and natural gas service, and it was alluded to a moment ago. Reliability in Cape May County and portions of Atlantic County was served only by one existing natural gas transmission line. As such, South Jersey Gas currently has about 140,000 customers, and Atlantic and Cape May Counties have about 60,000 customers, and Cape May County alone vulnerable to service disruption. In the event of a disruption, customers could expect to see the service lost potentially for multiple months. The events of two years ago rapidly demonstrated the extreme hardship and economic loss to the region with the loss of basic utility services. The 2019 decommissioning of the Oyster Creek Plant leaves under the England Plant to anchor the electric transmission system in southeastern northern Jersey against system offsets and loss of reliability. The technical bounds, the studies of the adverse effects of unbalanced electric distribution systems upon secure electrical supplies, so the potential for disruption is a clear and present danger. Environmental protection, the chosen route lies almost completely along with the systems of highways, and minimizes the impact to environmentally sensitive areas. Less than 10% of the pros route lies within already cleared rights-of-way owned by Atlantic City. The purpose of the pipeline is important to the attainment of our state Energy Master Plan and to the attainment of air quality goals. In 2011, state adopted an Energy Master Plan that included decommissioning of coal-fired power plants. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection found that repowering B.L. England with natural gas would achieve one goal of that plan. This pipeline is critical to meet the needs of the residents of Southern New Jersey, and we urge the Board to grant the necessary approval in this proceeding to proceed with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Christian Hartman.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Christian Hartman, it's H-A-R-T-M-A-N. I'm the Assistant Vice President of the New Jersey Alliance for Action. For the record, the Alliance is a nonpartisan association that brings people together from all walks of life, higher education, county government, local government, environmental groups, contractors, business, labor. We work for getting infrastructure projects, transportation, capital construction projects moving forward in New Jersey.
I have a lot of people together.
Kind of scary. People talking. The Alliance is in support of Cape May-Atlantic reliability projects. I think unfortunately, I do it myself, ad nauseam, we talk about Hurricane Sandy, and I think we do that because it affected all of us so much. I have family living south of me in New Jersey that had to stay with me for about a month because they didn't have heat, they didn't have power, part of their home was destroyed, and all joking aside about having two teenage boys stay with me for a month. It was very devastating for them. It was bad, for lack of a better word, it was bad. And I think it showed us that there's two things. First of all, the infrastructure in New Jersey is incredibly vulnerable. We're a coastal state, we're going to get hit by more storms. Sandy wasn't the first one. The strongest, of course, it's not going to be the last. The other thing is that resiliency and redundancy is extremely important in this state. This project is going to help over 140,000 people to have a backup power supply. It's incredible. It's incredible. Second thing is the type of energy. Now, the Alliance has been behind a number of different energy projects in the past, and some of them have been green, wind projects, solar projects, we've been behind those. In this case, you're talking about, while we're busy building out a lot of the green energy that we talk about, you can't ignore what we have and let that just rot and degrade. You can't do that, because everybody else will lose what they have. And in this, for this particular project, they're going to be able to pipe in natural gas to a facility that right now is using coal, which everybody tells you is horrible. And whereas it's not going to make everybody happy, it's at least a step in the right direction now we're going to be talking about turning to a natural gas facility instead. The third point that the Alliance will make is that it seems like everybody usually has a "not in my backyard" mentality when it comes to infrastructure. Where I live, for love of God, it's all over the place, it's everywhere, it's in my backyard. Some of it serves me, some of it serves other parts of the state, and that's a good thing. We need that, that's how we share it, but when everybody flicks that light switch on, and everybody puts the heat on, they want it to turn on immediately, don't they? That's what everybody wants. But nobody wants to look, see, or no one cares how that infrastructure gets there. No one cares how that power gets there. In our opinion, the company has done the right thing. We believe that they've done their homework, they've already got the U.S. Corps of Engineers, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and that because of all that, we urge the BPU to approve the project, and thanks for giving me a chance to make a testimony.
Your Honor, Diane Marie.
Hello, I am Diane Marie, M-A-Y-I-E.
I'm sorry, you have to speed up a little bit.
Thank you. M-A-R-I. I am a resident, I am two blocks away from Beasley's Point, I've been more and more, and I am a concerned citizen. But first, I would like to get on the record that I'm asking you to vote against the application. You know, the last time I was here, Georgina Shanley mentioned the Pope, and I've been thinking about that a lot lately. And there's a reason why the Pope is adored by so many people, and why he gets these huge That's because he's a truth teller, okay? He doesn't say one thing, gentlemen, and then mean something else. The other reason he is so loved is that he passed over on a fancy car, the opulent Vatican apartment, the red shoes, indicative of the church hierarchy. And the record crowds are because people are pretty fed up with their local government, who say one thing, and then behind closed doors, they do something very different. And he actually cares about the health and the well-being of the people. And we all know what he feels about the environment, and I wonder if he was in this room, what side of the fence he would be on right now. I've been to so many of these meetings, and I wish I could come to all of them, but I can't. And I just want to say that my heroes are the people who, the Jeff Tittles, the people who are here all of the time, the Bill Wolves, the Doug Allies, and Dr. Fennishell, who, thank you very much, has initiated a lawsuit against Commission Executive Director Nancy Whittemore for her closed-door meetings with South Jersey Gas in an effort to help push this dangerous pipeline through, in contravention of the Commission's mandate to preserve and So, I just want to take this opportunity to thank them so much, the people who are here fighting all of the time for our, you know, our rights to live in a healthy environment. And if this goes through, this pipeline, I don't know, I've read somewhere where it's 500 percent more particulate matter that's going to be going into the air, it's going to be 500 percent more dangerous for the residents who live here. And that's the science, that's the science that is correct. That's not anything that's made up. And this home rule, if this goes, if this is allowed to go through, I don't think anyone who lives here is, we're done, we're not going to have the ability to say anything about I'm starting to feel like this is the Dark Ages, and we're the Serbs, and, you know, we're going to just enact our home rule. Now, the meetings that I've been to, you listen to us, and everyone gives their opinion, and you're very polite, and then I read about where, if, all of the comments that I've heard again and again, the science that is correct. You just go ahead and continue down that road to get this pipeline in here. Now, that is wrong. And that's why I'm here, because I live here, and I want to, I don't want to have to move because of what's going to go on here if this goes through. And people who have businesses, and people who own land here, they don't want their rights taken away from them. So, I really want you to, you know, please vote against this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Rich Jackson.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Fierbeliso. My name is Rich Jackson, and I am Executive Director of the New Jersey Energy Coalition, Compton, last name J.R.A.C. Thompson. On behalf of New Jersey Energy Coalition's 55-member companies and organizations, I again like to thank you for the opportunity to express the Energy Coalition's continued support for South Jersey Gas Company's 22-mile, 24-inch gas pipeline between Cumberland and Cape May Counties. More specifically, the Energy Coalition is appearing here today to recommend that the BPU find that this project serves the public interest, and that a determination be made of the project that's exempt from the state's municipal land use regulations. As was noted in my previous testimony before this board, the Energy Coalition membership includes both statewide and local companies and organizations representing a pretty broad cross-section of energy, environmental, labor trade union, consumer, academic, and civic communities, and in full disclosure, South Jersey Gas is a member of the New Jersey Energy Coalition. Our mission is very targeted. We promote and support only initiatives such as this pipeline, which we, in our opinion, feel advance the safe production and delivery of clean, reliable, and affordable, American-made energy, all designed to help meet New Jersey's growing needs. In our view, the pipeline clearly meets our guiding principles, and will reinforce this area's access to clean, reliable energy by providing a critical backup source of natural gas for over 152,000 customers in Cape May and Atlantic Counties. It also will ensure the safe, secure delivery of natural gas to the Cape May Energy Center, which will enable that plant to convert from coal and oil to clean-burning natural gas, thus drastically reducing harmful air pollution, which of course is one of the key goals of the state's Energy Master Plan. Furthermore, it's well documented that the project has virtually no environmental, negative environmental impact. It's been designed and will be constructed to exceed the most stringent of regulations in the industry. The pipeline route selection was carefully analyzed and selected from eight alternatives to assure, to the maximum extent possible, that it travel adjacent to or under existing roadways, and that it avoid environmentally sensitive areas to the maximum extent possible. On a final note, both PJM and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection officials have each determined that a repowered B.L. England Plant will have a number of positive effects. One, the electric reliability is going to be enhanced for the region. Secondly, costly electricity congestion charges currently being incurred by the area's electric consumers will be reduced. And thirdly, we will avoid the need for many costly and environmentally intrusive electric system, transmission system improvements that are going to otherwise be needed in four short years when the Oyster Creek Nuclear Plant shuts down. So, in summary, we view that this project is a win for everyone in South Jersey, and the New Jersey Energy Coalition commends the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities for its support of this project thus far. Energy reliability, job creation, and increased economic activity, all of these things are accomplished while also achieving what the DEP has sought for many years, the end to coal and oil burning at the B.L. England Generator Station. This is an accomplishment we feel that the South Jersey region can surely be proud of and build upon. For all these reasons, the New Jersey Energy Coalition urges the Board of Public Utilities to approve South Jersey Gas Company's petition, granting it a waiver from the state's municipal land use law. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Charles Montgomery.
I am, I think the first one you got wrong. Carlton Montgomery.
Carlton.
No, wrong. It's spelled C, my last name's M-O-N-T-G-O-M-E-R-Y. I'm Executive Director of the Pinelands Preservation Alliance. We're going to be submitting written comments and reports to the BPU, so I'm just going to try to summarize. to try to summarize the, what we see as the critical points for why the board should not grant the petition. The first is that the proposed pipeline is not necessary or even desirable to safeguard the region's power supply. Generalities are easy, and we've heard a lot of generalities, but the independent evidence and the analysis shows that South Jersey's electrical supply does not depend on BL England at all. There's also no basis, there's no actual basis for concluding that a redundant gas supply is necessary here. People keep talking about Hurricane Sandy, which is obviously a red herring in this context. Hurricane Sandy had no effect on underground transmission lines. It's a red herring to talk about resiliency in this context in support of the pipeline, rather than against it. The pipeline, moreover, is greatly overdesigned for the purposes that have been stated by the company, yet it will cost South Jersey residents, rate payers, millions of dollars. Atlantic City Electric is carrying out upgrades already to its transmission system that it's doing regardless of what happens with the pipeline. And PJM has said that actually repowering BL England for a full-time plant will require upgrades that are otherwise unnecessary, that will also cost the rate payers money. So the project's going to cost millions of dollars to Atlantic City Electric and South Jersey Gas's rate payers for no genuine public benefit. It also violates, the route they've chosen violates the Comprehensive Management Plan of the Pinelands, as the Pinelands Commission has already determined. The proposed pipeline doesn't meet Pinelands requirements because it doesn't primarily serve the needs of the Pinelands. The BPU has already determined in its prior orders that most of the call for the pipeline is dedicated to providing alleged redundancy of service to South Jersey Gas's existing customers in Cape May and Atlantic Counties, a theme that has been promoted by a number of the supporters of the pipeline. The vast majority of those customers live outside and are outside the Pinelands. The electricity at the BL England Power Plant will generally also not be dedicated to the Pinelands, as one of your representatives has already testified to the Pinelands Commission in one of its prior meetings before, at the Pit's Boat in January 2014. So, based on your prior orders, the testimony of your own people, to say nothing of the dozens of statements made by the Pinelands Commission staff and even by representatives of South Jersey Gas, the proposed route does not meet Pinelands standards. It raises significant environmental risks that can be avoided by either not building the pipeline or building it in a fashion that's compliant with Pinelands rules. It's also a bad investment due to the plant's location and the ongoing rise in sea levels and flooding events in this area. Rutgers University and NOAA projections for sea level rise show that the site of the plant will be subject to increasingly frequent and severe flooding. While the power plant may make short-term profits for its owners, it has no long-term future for supplying electricity in this region. It is funny to hear people talking about this power plant, about making a huge investment in this power plant in the interest of resiliency, given its location. It is not a resilient site, and it should not be the subject for bending Pinelands rules or for forcing rate payers to make a huge investment in it. The Board of Public Utilities also, we believe, cannot waive duly adopted ordinances, local ordinances, and procedures for review that are required by the Pinelands Protection Act, the Federal National Parks Recreation Act of 1978, and the Comprehensive Management Plan. They are not in that category of municipal reviews that the Municipal Land Use Law can allow BPU to waive. They are required by the Pinelands laws, and they're not subject to waiver. BPU also, we believe, lacks jurisdiction over this matter because South Jersey Gas has filed an appeal that is pending about this very pipeline, in the Public Division of the Superior Court. And finally, the Pinelands Commission is now saying that the Board of Public Utilities will become the agency for deciding whether or not this project complies with Pinelands rules if the board grants this petition and preempts municipal approvals. That's a role I think BPU should avoid. We think the Commission's position is mistaken, but it is their position, and it would put BPU in a very awkward position. The BPU should avoid having to be the agency that determines whether the project complies with the Pinelands rules by denying the petition and allowing municipal review processes and Pinelands Commission review to proceed the way they always and normally would. For all of these reasons and more that we'll provide in written comments and reports, we ask that BPU deny the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Good afternoon. My name is Georgina Shannon, S-H-A-N-O-Y. I live in Ocean City, New Jersey, which is in the shadow of the coal plant, and I'm the co-founder of Citizens United for New York Energy. And I'm here today on behalf of our group to ask you to vote down this petition by South Jersey Gas. We've heard all of these speakers who have, representing groups that have financial gain for this pipeline, the Chambers of Commerce, Energy Coalition, they talk about minimum impacts with this gas pipeline, just like minimum impacts with mountain top removal, Grand Canyon mining, Arctic drilling, it's minimal impacts, that's always been solved as minimal impacts. What we're having today is a hearing about giving up home rule to a private entity, South Jersey Gas. The three municipalities, Upper Township, Estelle Manor, Maurice River Township, will give up all their zoning, site plan review, and all other municipal land use ordinances and regulations promulgated under the authority of the municipal land use law, and these shall not, it shall not apply to the proposed project. None of these, none of these rights that are normally given to the people and communities and who are exercised by their elected officials will be allowed. So, South Jersey Gas will have ultimate right on all of these areas, zoning, site plan, and all the ordinances. I'm here because what this is, is an erosion of local rights. I come from Ireland, a country that was forced to give up its rights. And here we have a situation where elected officials are voluntarily behind this giving up of people's rights in these communities. We've had a severe lack of education to the people in the area. They don't even know what is happening. They don't know that the right of a zoning area, zoning particular areas within this area where the pipeline is supposed to go, will not have to run through the zoning boards or planning boards, nothing municipal. It would be, all of these rights are going to be taken away from them. I spoke with a resident of Upper Township, and she went to Upper Township's engineer to find out exactly where the pipeline would run, exactly what is the meaning of this giving up of the municipal land use right, and he did not know. He said, "Well, we don't have the plan." So this is a severe lack, not only education, but input by the public. What we've seen too is a complete politicizing of the issue. We have, from the governor's office, right down to the local municipality, this issue of this pipeline has been politicized, and it's been taken out of the hands of the residents. We also have conflict of interest within the BPU. The chairman of the BPU, John Morals, founded the Energy Coalition, which is a lobbying group for the fossil fuel industry. And not only are you regulating the industry as a BPU, but you're also an applicant for a memorandum of agreement. So how can you meet yourself coming back? You're regulating and you're applying at the same time. I mean, I think there's an arrogance that really, really annoys me and upsets me. You think that we're stupid. You have all of the suits here, they're always first to speak so that the press can pick up their comments, and then you have the plebes afterwards. And this is the fourth BPU hearing I've come to, where 90% of the actual citizens have voiced opinions against resolutions, and you have never considered their input. A few days after the last one, 90% of the people were against the issue. We went to Trenton, there wasn't even a discussion. You reassured everybody that we would be heard, that we're all very, very important, that what we have to say is extremely important, and yet, it's totally ignored. And it's, it gets to be hard, because I do believe in democracy, and I do believe in the founding fathers' ideals for this country. And I have a statement by a president of the League of Municipalities from 1967, he was the president, and his name is Lewis Bay. He said, "My fellow officials, I don't think I'm overdramatizing when I say that the next quarter century will be the time of decision for municipal government as an effective institution in American society. Okay, local government, the historical foundation block which solidly supported the superstructure of this great nation, is cracking under the weight of social, economic, and technical stress unknown and unforeseen by governmental architects of the past. By the turn of the century, this venerable old foundation, which we love so well, will either have been remodeled and strengthened or condemned as unfit for human habitation, torn down, and relegated to the archives of history." In short, if local government as we know it is not revitalized, reinforced, and reevaluated by the society which was created to serve, it'll cease to be able to continue to serve and will be discarded as no longer socially useful. So what we're seeing in all of the institutions lately is a complete takeover by the moneyed interests. And we're seeing the same thing with the pipeline. We saw for, the application originally was for public infrastructure to be built, and then when that was defeated, the word "public" became "private," and now it's reaching you, and you, the BPU will have ultimate say. It's, it really is a rigged system, and it's a sham, and it creates great sense of hopelessness with people, no matter how articulate, no matter what the science is. And you've been given lots of information from Tiffany Habsch, from Carter Montgomery today, I'm sure Pringle, Bill Wolf, we give you all of the science, but it's like talking to the wall. It's like asking your barber if you need a haircut. Of course, the vested interests will get it. I think we'd have to have a moratorium of pipelines, gas pipelines, in this state before the whole state self-destructs. It's, it's not going to happen. Like, I think the institutions and the corporations are behind it, but the people are against it. And this thing is going to start spreading all over the country, internationally. People are beginning to be aware of what's happening, and I would ask you to listen to us, to take heed, rely on science, not on politics. Vote down this petition on behalf of democracy and of the good citizens of New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Bob Marshall, M-A-R-S-H-A-L-L, and I'm the Director of Business Advocacy and Legislative Affairs for the Greater Atlantic City Chamber of Congress. Since 1914, the Greater Atlantic City Chamber has provided its members in the local business community with meaningful services, helping to create a favorable economic climate, help foster economic growth in the region's economy, and expand employment opportunities that benefit the entire South Jersey region. The Greater Atlantic City Chamber fully supports the construction of this pipeline. As a state, we should be focused on investing in our infrastructure, whether it's energy, which will be power plants, transmission and distribution facilities, or transportation, roads, bridges, et cetera. This pipeline would serve the BL England facility, as already been pointed out, at Beasley's Point, allowing the conversion of a coal-fired plant to natural gas. This is clearly a cleaner option for the continued operation of the plant, which employs over 60 workers full-time and will employ many contractors during construction and after it begins operation. Repowering BL England will provide improved system reliability and enhance the energy supply for residential and business customers in both Cape May County and Atlantic County. And as you know, the existing South Jersey Gas system has only one natural gas transmission pipeline that provides gas to Cape May County and parts of Atlantic County, and natural gas is the primary heating source for the area. We've talked about the issue of electric energy reliability in the southeastern portion of New Jersey, and clearly it will become a bigger issue in the not-too-distant future when the Oyster Creek Nuclear Facility in Ocean County closes in 2019. One thing that we do know is that absent significant electric system improvements, generator retirements will reduce system reliability. Therefore, it's important that we approve this pipeline to keep BL England in operation and to increase reliability in this area of the state. South Jersey Gas's proposal clearly does that. Simply put, the pipeline will allow residences and businesses to have safe, clean, and reliable energy. Delays could impact reliability, and providing cleaner energy options should be encouraged. In closing, the Greater Atlantic City Chamber respectfully requests that the BPU approve this project so we can finally move forward. Thank you.
Ray Phillips, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S, President of the Ironworkers Local 350. President of the Ironworkers Local 350, Atlantic City. I'm here on behalf of my membership to publicly support this project. We feel it's good for Atlantic and Cape May Counties, and we ask the, we've heard a lot of the same testimony over and over again. We've been here for the last couple of years, we've showed up as well. We feel it's a good project, it's going to create jobs for Atlantic and Cape May County people, and we think it's good. We urge you to support it as well. Thank you.
Hi. That's Rick D. Bruno. D-I, capital B-R-U-N-O. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I live at 18 Timothy Lane, Cape May Courthouse, New Jersey. 18 Timothy Lane, Cape May Courthouse. I'm going to be short and sweet. I'm an electrician, a member of IBW Local 351. I think that I'm in support of this, I think it's going to bring jobs to the area, and I do not see any negative impact on the environment or the Pinelands. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is William Karu, K-A-R-E-W. I'm a resident of Upper Township. I'm a retired member of Electricians Local 351. Yeah, I'm totally in favor of this project. It's going to create jobs, it's going to save the existing jobs, I don't see how it's going to hurt the environment, and I'm asking you to please to move forward with the project. Thank you very much.
Natalie Niss, 350, Petersburg. I'm a property owner.
Spell that out, please, for the reporter.
N-E-I-S-S.
Thank you.
I'm a property owner and Upper Township taxpayer. There seems to be a bit of confusion here for me today, and there's a lot of testimony, like either for or against the pipeline, and I understood that this was about 4055D19, and my concern today is how this ruling would preempt our rights to home rule. I believe... I believe there will be negative effects on Tuckahoe, and these negative effects need consideration. Tuckahoe is a historic district. The site is across the street from Hyland's Village and the Upper Township Master Plan, and is located in Tuckahoe Village, Block 350, Lot 12. The interconnect station is not appropriate to the landscape in historic Tuckahoe Village. As a taxpayer, October 15th at 7:30 PM, I asked Upper Township Committee to object to this petition, to allow this project to go before Upper Township zoning, review for safety, screening concerns of the resident in Tuckahoe Village, also for the taxpayers in Tuckahoe Fire District where there's a lot of tax-exempt property. By Oprah, I requested Upper Township to see the township of Upper Property deed for Block 350, Lot 12. I was denied on-site review. This valve station will require ordinance for variance. It will take away from Tuckahoe Parkland, all fields. I believe this gas valve station will negatively affect Upper Township taxpayers in Hyland and Tuckahoe Village. I request, I have faith you will reject this application. In my opinion, it is not needed for service or welfare of the Upper Township at this time, and I request further input. Thank you.
Gregory Myers. Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Gregory Myers, last name is spelled M-A-Y-P-R-S. I'm here today on behalf of the New Jersey Society for Environmental and Economic Development, or NJC. A lot of the prepared comments I had have already been echoed, so I'll try and be brief. By way of introduction, NJC is a diverse coalition of labor and business, which is formed through a common belief that economic development and environmental protection are not mutually exclusive. For over thirty years, NJC has supported balanced public policies that create private sector jobs, bolster our economy, and enhance our environment. We believe this project achieves all those parameters. NJC would like to register our strong support for South Jersey Gas's proposed natural gas pipeline to deliver clean, burning, efficient natural gas to the BL England Electric Generation Facility. The southern New Jersey area is in a unique position to benefit from an infrastructure upgrade that will not only create a new source of energy production but fuel economic development in the region. The initiative proposed by South Jersey Gas represents an incredible amount of direct benefit to the residents and taxpayers of the community, and ultimately to the state's economy. The plan to construct a new twenty-two-mile gas pipeline will provide system reliability in the gunsees, more than one hundred forty thousand customers served in Atlantic City and Cape May area counties. It will also provide significant reliability to existing customers in the pipeline. Currently, many communities in the southernmost part of the state are vulnerable to adderages and disruptions, as much as that serves territory at single feet. The last point I'd like to make is that New Jersey needs to purchase portions of electric capacity and supply from out-of-state. As a result of the capacity prices, which average much higher for New Jersey than other states within the PDM interconnection grid, this problem will only be compounded when the 2019 Oyster Creek Generating Station, which produces seven percent of the state's electricity, will be shut down. New Jersey already has states, already has the tenth highest electricity prices in the country. It is essential for southern New Jersey communities to repower the BL England plant. The project is also expected to create thousands of direct and indirect jobs and variety of trades for New Jersey. NJC believes the infrastructure improvement plans proposed by South Jersey Gas should move forward as supports all efforts that will enhance the environment and foster a robust energy infrastructure throughout New Jersey. Thank you for your considerations.
Thank you for your comments.
David Pringle. I am a campaign director in New Jersey for Clean Water Action, a nationwide environmental group with over a million members. We have over a hundred fifty thousand here in New Jersey. I'm proud to associate myself with the confidence of Jeff and Carlton and Georgina. I have very mixed emotions today. I am sad, I am mad, I am desperate, and I'm informed. And I frankly don't know whether I should be crying, yelling, begging, or just advocating. And frankly, I don't know what I'm going to do, I guess we're going to find out in the next few minutes. This is the umpteenth hearing on this, everybody's saying the same thing, and the level of ignorance and disingenuousness by most of the folks on the other side is incredible. To suggest that South Jersey Chamber of Commerce and the Energy Coalition and the Alliance for Action are in a position to give testimony on the environment and to suggest that there are no environmental impacts, you can argue about how big the environmental impacts are and how they're balanced compared to some of the other impacts, but to suggest four to six times more pollution than BL England currently emits, or to suggest an infinite amount of pollution, because if this isn't approved, BL England ceases to exist, so we're going from zero emissions to massive emissions. Methane isn't cleaner than coal when you look at the whole life cycle. And this plan again, because they're going to be going to permanent, or full-time with base load instead of peak, it's going to be four to six times more pollution. The plan is still outdated under its current plans, it is not state-of-the-art. Cooling towers are state-of-the-art, and they always say, "Oh, we can't afford it because it's going to be a temporary, we can't afford the long-term capital cost." This sucker's going to be operating for forty years, they can't afford a cooling tower, so they want to kill hundreds of millions of fish. That has an economic impact. It is fracturing the pine lands by putting this pipeline through, that has an impact. It's going to increase development pressures inside the pine lands and outside the pine lands, that has an environmental impact. That little proviso that, "Oh, we're not going to link to any gas or provide any links inside the forest area," from an environmental perspective is meaningless. I wish the ratepayer didn't bother to testify, or at least had more, ratepayer advocate had more honest testimony, he might as well have said, you know, "We're not going to testify until it doesn't matter and it's after the fact." The homeowners that live within a hundred feet of this pipeline, that has an impact. The experts, PJN says, "We don't need Oyster Creek, or we will be fine without East Oyster Creek in BL England, because we have other sources coming online." These electrons move at the speed of light, so there's no more, you're no more likely to be getting electron in this, from these light bulbs right now, from BL England as you are a coal plant in Ohio, because it's the same grid and apnea is practically the speed of light. So I hope, but I'm very skeptical, the BPU will either not believe the disingenuousness and/or the ignorance, or they're going to be part of it. But unfortunately, you are the power of the B, so we got to play by the rules. So I'd like to make four specific points, any of which are reasons, gives you grounds to reject this. Construction of the proposed pipeline violates the Pine Lands Comprehensive Management Plan, which bars the use of Pine Lands Forest Area as a transit route for such infrastructure development, unless it is intended to primarily serve the needs of the pine lands. BL England is not the pine lands. Cape May Coastal Barrier Islands is not the pine lands. Number two, municipal land use provision. In question for this petition cannot be waived by the BPU because it's authorized by federal law, the New Jersey Pine Lands Act, and the Pine Lands Comprehensive Management Plan. They're not subject to the waiver via the municipal land use law, but only through the waiver provisions of the township's certified land use ordinances. The pine lands staff acknowledged that this project doesn't serve the pine bairns, and the executive director is not empowered to say, "Oops, never mind," and that's in effect what she has done here. She has exceeded her authority, and you should not be signing off on it. Three, the Pine Lands Commission already made the determination that the pipeline violates a comprehensive management plan and chose not to provide an exemption from those rules in January. The full commission made that decision, and you shouldn't be empowering the executive director for political reasons to do an end run. Four, the construction of the pipeline on the proposed route is not reasonably necessary for the service, convenience, and welfare of the public. The pipeline will exhaustively, will either exclusively provide gas to BL England or parts of Cape May and Atlantic County that are not in pine lands. Pipeline's proposed will also bring arrangement of environmental harm, as I previously talked about, that's contrary to the public welfare. And there are viable alternative paths and viable alternative ways to provide the gas electricity that the area needs, and they all create more jobs than this proposal would. In effect, there's no change before, there's no difference in the project as before you now than it was before. By moving one minor part of this proposal, a couple hundred feet, so it's not in the forest area, is not a significant change. Promising that you're not going to provide, having even a legally binding document saying that there won't be any gas links to the forest area is not going to protect the pine You have an opportunity here to be independent or be a rubber stamp. I think I know which way we're headed, given all the previous rulings and given the board's decision to reject offshore wind over and over again and not promulgate rules, and has yet to say no to any pipeline. And this whole process is rigged. You're in effect, and I know it's not your decision, but you're basically, Pete, judge and jury of a new proposal when you previously ruled and expressed your opinion on it. This is a classic example of why the public is fed up, and faith in government is at near all-time low, as you can see in the presidential race now. Approving this pipeline is something that Donald Trump would do. A vote for this is a vote for Donald Trump. The alternatives are superior. The board can do the right thing, you can prove us wrong and not be a rubber stamp, and you, Commissioner, can vote four to one. Vote your conscience for once, don't just do it because it's going to happen anyway.
Good afternoon, Michael Cirillo, P-E-S-N-P-E-R, A-L-L-I-C-L-L-O. Good afternoon, my name is Michael Cirillo, on the inside environment for Oakley 351, IBW. Naturally, we care very much about preserving our jobs. We urge the Board of Public Utilities to issue the necessary approvals required so that South Jersey Gas can provide service to a repowered Cape May Energy Center facility. The businesses and residences will have the much-needed natural gas and electric reliability. Please move forward with projects, help our region, and help us keep our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jack McCarron. My name is Jack McCarron, M-C-A-R-R-O-N. I'm a resident of Cape May County, and I won't repeat all of the on-point comments made by Mr. Montgomery Myers. I oppose the pipeline, not the pipeline, the pipeline as proposed to run through a protected area. I don't believe the Comprehensive Management Plan for the Pine Lands envisioned a popular vote as to whether or not we can violate its provisions, and that's essentially what's being advocated here. I've heard a lot of what might be otherwise persuasive arguments as to why this pipeline would provide more energy, why it would provide more jobs, et cetera, et cetera. However, there's a slight impediment here. There's a legal document that governs where pipelines or other utilities or structures can be built in the pine lands, and all of the rhetoric around this is ignoring that fact. So what we're really saying here is we want to disband those protections. And once we do that for this pipeline or some other project, that's probably the end of the pine lands, which is a terrible result. I have one other comment or question. I was surprised when I logged on to the internet the other day to see a ad by South Jersey Gas, giving all the reasons why this pipeline should be built, and I was just curious, is it paid for that? Did the Board of Public Utilities pay for it? Or does South Jersey Gas pay for it, under what authority, and with whose money did they pay it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Daniel Ortega. O-R-T-E-G-A. I'm here on behalf of the Engineers Labor and Employee Cooperative, ELEC. We are the management部 for the operated engineers Local 25. We represent over 6,500 members. Together with our signature contractor, we work to secure building projects, create jobs, maintain a potential workforce, promote economic development, and stimulate building construction. Our training facilities have recently been ranked among the top two best places to train and learn about pipeline construction in the country. The benefits of such projects are numerous, including but not limited to the jobs created for our members and contractors who would work on this project. Our members are exceptionally skilled in pipeline construction, and this project will provide many jobs during its construction phase. We have successfully and safely built pipelines in all types of surroundings, including environmentally sensitive areas. Our workforce is highly trained, and safety is our priority. However, this project will not just provide construction jobs, it will help to protect our area in the long run. In order for New Jersey to remain economically competitive and a great place to live, we need to, we need responsible energy infrastructure development. Our members can just work here. We live here, we raise our families here too. This isn't just about creating construction jobs. We also know the benefits of safe, reliable energy resources for our communities. And pipelines are an integral part of a sound energy policy, and they are the safest and most reliable way to transport natural gas. In addition, pipe transmission is also more efficient than transporting it by rail or truck. This project is a perfect example of the type of construction projects that are important to our organization and members. Our members are active outdoors men and women who are committed to preserving the environment for future generations and to suggest that we're doing only by consideration for jobs at the, I'm sorry, consideration for jobs at the expense of public safety or the environment is in itself a gross oversimplification. On behalf of ELEC, I would like to boast our support and ask that the Board of Public Utilities approach this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. My sign-in chief was taken, I believe the last name that I had on the sign-in chief was, last name was Richards? Yes? I'm sorry, I didn't remember the first name.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I would like to spell both my names, because my first name is more difficult than my last. C-I-D-N-I-E. Last name is Richards, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S. I am a Tabernacle resident, and I'm also a Pine Lands Preservation Alliance member. I'm speaking this afternoon on behalf of Dr. Bob Allen, who was unable to be here. First, I would like to thank you for opening up this hearing for as long as commenters would like to speak, and I have prepared remarks right now in regard to NJSA 40, Home 50-D-19, BPU Document Number G-013111049. As I said, I represent Dr. Bob Allen, who is a former Director of Education for District 1199P, National Union of Hospital and Healthcare Employees, AFL-CIO. I taught for Pennsylvania State University for over ten years. BPU Document Number G013111049. As I said, I represent Dr. Bob Allen, who is a former Director of Education for District 1199P, National Union of Hospital and Healthcare Employees, AFL-CIO. I taught at Pennsylvania State University for over 10 years and currently teach for Cumberland County College of New Jersey from both Wilmington and Stockton Universities. I am a voter, resident, taxpayer, and property owner in upper township of Cape May County, New Jersey. I am in total and unequivocal opposition to the South Jersey Gas proposal to construct a major transmission pipeline through the New Jersey Pinelands area. I reiterate what has been said by thousands of citizens, numerous organizations, and echoed in press editorials that the BPU and Pinelands Commission have no business nor ethical nor legal ability to approve such a pipeline. If you continue along a path to approval, you will surely find the BPU and Pinelands Commission mired in a lengthy legal battle that will waste the time and energy of both entities, divert them from their true mission, and cost the New Jersey taxpayers dearly. However, I specifically voice objection and strong opposition to the request made by South Jersey Gas that the BPU allow changes such that, in quotes, "The zoning, site plan review, and all other municipal land use ordinances and regulations promulgate pursuant to 40 of the New Jersey statutes and the Municipal Land Use Act of the State of New Jersey shall not apply to the project," end quote. Simply put by an average citizen, South Jersey Gas wants to build this pipeline on its own terms without any local oversight and scrutiny, and the local peoples, their ordinances, and governments would damn. This is not what democracy looks like. The founders of our constitutional democracy juggled and resolved wisely many issues. One of them was the conflicts and proper arrangement of powers and oversight between large-scale governmental power versus, power in voice for the people at more regional and local levels. The balancing act they ultimately approved gave weight to both national and more local power in voice for the people. Without this, we would not have a democracy. Yet they even went a few steps further and more locally. Our states are divided into other divisions which are not merely administrative and larger powers. Our county and more locally units such as townships and municipalities are also units of governance and have a right to say and oversight on matters, even taxation that pertain to our own backyards. This setup gives every citizen in voice and some control over the workings of local government and any bodies such as private corporations and what they do in and to our environment, both physical and human. With this appeal to the BPU, South Jersey Gas wants to eliminate any local oversight and control of what South Jersey Gas will literally do in our own backyards. And they're asking the BPU to collude with them in this undemocratic move. I challenge the BPU to turn down this request by South Jersey Gas. I further challenge the BPU to realize that its past action on behalf of South Jersey Gas before the Pinelands Commission is also illegal and improper uses of its mandate and authority. I also challenge the BPU to realize that its current collusion with South Jersey Gas is a type of wedlock with an entity that wants full reign to do business as it wants and where it wants without necessary regard for impacts of their project on the environment and citizens. Sadly, this wedlock has already begun, but there is hope, divorce is possible, and never too late. If the BPU persists in this relationship, it should be aware of numerous problems even with South Jersey Gas's credibility and veracity. I leave you again with one major example of this problem, which I have already made available for the record. South Jersey Gas has claimed in numerous venues and on their own website that they have no important pipeline accidents in the past 20 years. Yet, publicly available information shows that indeed they have had a number of accidents in recent years. Appropriate documentation was mailed available to you already this past summer and is appended here again. I have received no reply from the BPU regarding this serious safety matter. Either South Jersey Gas has lied to the public and perhaps the BPU by extension, or they have not done due diligence to get facts straight on their own operations, or perhaps they have corporate Indonesia. If any of these interpretations apply, I certainly do not trust them to build yet another pipeline in a sensitive area, nor would I ever want them to have free reign over our regional backyard without proper and existing means of oversight and control, which they seek to destroy in this, in the instant appeal. Make no mistake about this, however, this is not just about a pipeline. This appeal to you goes to the heart of our American democracy. Whether anyone is for or against the South Jersey Gas pipeline proposal, they should realize that if South Jersey Gas can abrogate our local laws and rights as citizens, we all lose. No further real debate on the matter will be allowed or have any real-world impact. It is to me as if South Jersey Gas has adopted this slogan to all of us, in quotes, "Shut up, go home, pay your gas bill," end quote. This sounds remarkably like the issue that confronted those former colonists who became true citizens, no taxation without representation. I don't yet know about the BPU, but I saw it with citizens. Let's keep our democracy, reject this undemocratic South Jersey Gas appeal to the BPU, and representing Dr. Bob Allen, keep asking to please reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Wolf.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, our Mr. Commissioner, hearing officer.
Whatever you want to call him.
Thank you. I may end up taking that commission.
That's the first amendment, right?
Bill Wolf, W-O-L-F-E. I live in Warden County. I'm here to urge the board to reject the petition. I want to begin by saying, trying to add some discipline to this proceeding by reminding the board that the petition is issued pursuant to a specific provision in the municipal land use law, and that therefore one would expect there'd be some circumscribed and focused analysis on the provisions of the land use law and the exercise of municipal power and how the pipeline is compatible and consistent with that such that the board could approve the petition. However, what we find in the applicant's own petition is a broad, throw everything at the wall and hope it sticks, argument, which therefore opens the door for me to argue a full suite of issues that go well beyond the circumscribed municipal land use law that we're here to talk about today. By the applicant's own petition, they cite as basis for the board's review a reference to consistency with the Energy Master Plan. They cited a text on page 70 of the Energy Master Plan. I want to remind the board that the text they cite, which they urge the board to consider as if it came down from heaven and was circumscribed in stone, is a conditional veto statement by Governor Christie vetoing a proposed bill passed by the legislature that would ban the practice of fracking. That conditional veto statement is a political statement. It conflicts with the available science in at least two important areas by claiming that natural gas is cleaner fuel than coal, which I'll go into later, which is a false statement, and that the air pollutants emitted from the BL England plant will be significantly reduced, which is also an unsupported statement and deeply misleading. And not only did they only cite one provision from the entire Energy Master Plan that the board has adopted, but they left out, they cherry picked, they picked that one policy and it was a prescription by the governor's conditional veto having no scientific validity. They ignored the core of the Energy Master Plan, which is meeting the Global Warming Response Act goals, the 20% reduction by 2020 and the 80% reduction by 2050. There is no demonstration by the applicant that the emissions from the BL England plant and the pipeline and the life cycle emissions from the upstream gas production will meet the goals of the Global Warming Response Act. Yet that's a portion of the Energy Master Plan that's specifically in there. I want to see a compliance demonstration with data and real studies that show the emissions from natural gas are as bad or worse from a climate warming perspective than the coal. And we can't have a Board of Public Utilities that's supposed to base decisions on science and the public interest basing decisions on political statements of the governor that defy the science, that conflict with the science. And we can't let an applicant cherry pick one provision from an entire Energy Master Plan and say that therefore the energy policy of this state is met consistent with the project. These are ludicrous attempts. Second point is that the petition is dated. It's over two years old now. It's stale. It should be withdrawn and rejected by the board on that ground alone. And it's significant, the time has elapsed since the petition was filed in October of 2013. There have been substantial changes both in the conditions in the world and in the regulatory framework here before the commission. Specifically, the applicant's petition specifically says, "We anticipate the Pinelands Commission's approval." That's a part of their petition. I didn't say that. That's their petition. The Pinelands Commission did not do so. Another material fact that's completely changed the regulatory landscape is that the Pinelands Commission deadlocked on a memorandum agreement with the board on the project. And that, therefore, the Pinelands Commission has not given the consent that the applicant assumed. Third, that since then, the Pinelands Commission has issued a certificate of filing, which the board has to take cognizance of, because under the certificate of filing and the CMP, the certificate of filing basically says that the Commission will not conduct a review of the pipeline project, that the municipalities will. Now, if you couple that, that procedure under the CMP with the provision that you're here to review under, under the land use law, the BPU becomes the review entity for determining compliance under the Pinelands Plan. Again, I think Court Montgomery referred to this. This is, again, this is what the lawyers call an absurd outcome. This could never have been thought by anybody in the legislature that gave, that enacted those two provisions, or in the CMP that created that process, that the Board of Public Utilities would stand in the shoes of municipalities when the board itself had acted on behalf of the applicant by representing the applicant via a memorandum of agreement and then issuing three orders approving the pipeline route, the contracts, and other extraneous matters. So the board, having issued those approvals, would have to recuse itself from its own outcome. This is like Twilight Zone stuff here, all right? So think about the interaction of the CMP review process and how it delegates the private development review process to the municipal level, in concert with the applicant's petition before you to strip local review and put you in the position of reviewing the project for consistency with the CMP. Doesn't make a lot of sense. And it can't, and it can't stand legally, it can't, this is an outcome that can't stand. So again, the board has to look at the outcome of its regulatory decision-making as to how it would actually work. The applicant's petition states three objectives for the pipeline. BL England dedicated line, resiliency line, and growth, service, new demand, growth. Three objectives. Their supporting documents that they include in their appendices have an engineering study that states a purpose and need that is limited to the BL England. So the applicant's petition is inherently contradictory as to what the need and purpose of the project is. That's number one. Number two, the three objectives that they state in the text of their petition are mutually conflicting. Now, I'll be very specific here. If there is a dedicated line that dedicates that gas to the BL England plant under a contract, then it cannot provide service for new growth, and it cannot provide resiliency. If it provides resiliency, then it cannot, if gas is going to, you know, Cape May County and some, maybe the Soviets are gonna come back and nuke us or something, and we'll have a breach in the pipeline. You know, fall before you bomb. This is, again, ludicrous, this is magical thinking. But again, those objectives about what the pipeline is designed to serve are conflicting. And by the same token, if it's gonna serve new growth, then it's gonna compete with the available gases for BL England. And nobody has ever explained the capacity line, as to how much of the capacity is dedicated to BL England, how much of the capacity could serve new growth, and how much of the capacity would be there in the event of reliability or what they experienced in New England with during high peak demand during the winter, where I think you have a provision in your approvals, and I'm not positive here, where there's a contract provision that says if there's a crunch during the winter and we've got this explosive growth in gas demand, that the commercial and residential users get first dibs on that gas and therefore BL England gets shut off. So there goes your energy reliability argument right out the window too. So there's a lot of things here that are just kind of really funky, that don't have any transparency, don't have any numerical showing, and there's no analysis to kind of explain these kind of very important issues. It's like buried in the textbook. The applicant's, the applicant's petition dated October 2013.
What was the date again, sir?
October 2013. That's the date of petition. I don't have the date, was it 28th? I'm not sure. It's on the cover page. I read, I start, a famous journalist, Iain Stone, said, "Always, when you're reviewing government documents, always start from the back." That's where all the good stuff is. But at any rate, the applicant's petition said that the BL England plant was under aggressive compliance conditions under the DEPA CO, and that if there weren't service provided during the peak demand in the summer of 2015, that, and this is a quote, "That there could be blackouts or brownouts," end quote. Okay? That threat didn't materialize. Here we are, it's the fall of 2015 and a life fade out. So clearly, we have either some kind of dated analysis that justified that claim, or that claim never had a technical basis and was purely a scare tactic, all right? And again, the board's gotta scrutinize these things mostly because you guys are in the energy reliability business, and PJM, is my understanding, has backed off the notion that this plant is necessary to meet reliability standards and that the infrastructure upgrades will occur and be paid for by ratepayers regardless of whether BL England goes online or not. So there's a lot of misinformation that's out there that you guys need to examine critically and find facts. And last time I made this exact same argument about the need to find facts, and I read the board's order, and it said, "Bill Wolf from Board of Town said the project is gonna hurt the environment." You see? The second, the second point is that the applicant's, this is about the fourth point, applicant's petition cites as a basis the Energy Master Plan. As you know, as you were at the hearing, the board is in the process of updating the Energy Master Plan. Therefore, I'm a planner and a regulator by career, and the planning I understood was that independency of an update of a plan, an applicant, application that comes forward should be held in advance until the plan is adopted because they're changing the goalposts. The policies are changing, the facts are changing, we're gonna have a different energy plan. So on that basis alone, somebody earlier, I can't remember who, said there should be a moratorium. On that basis alone, you don't have to have a full-blown moratorium statewide, which I support, but for this application, it should say, "The Energy Master Plan, since you gentlemen, South Jersey Gas, your attorneys in their infinite wisdom have submitted a petition to us that hedges your, or, you know, puts the whole weight of your project on the back of the Energy Master Plan, well, guys, you know, we're reconsidering a lot of policies there. We had a lot of strong public testimony during the public hearing process about necessary changes to make the transition from a fossil-based infrastructure to a renewable infrastructure. And we're in, you know, you guys are fossil, you're gonna be, this is a 40-year-plus project. We can't consider any fossil infrastructure until we figure out, well, how we're gonna meet our renewable and climate goals in a carbon-constrained future." I'm almost right in the order myself. But earlier, at the tail end of Court Montgomery's comments and in my testimony earlier, the issue of board, the board's role with respect to objective and independent view being impossible to satisfy. Another issue I want to throw on the table, and Georgina Shandley mentioned it as well, is that, and I won't be specific, I'm not gonna name names for organizations, but I'd ask board council to conduct a recusal review from all board commissioners and board staff with respect to any of their roles or involvement or interests in South Jersey Industries, South Jersey Gas, or energy, or any member of the New Jersey Energy Project, or any other, frankly, any other intervenor or testifying group, because the board's credibility is on the line here. And if you don't have an opinion from council saying they've conducted a recusal review and determined that no conflicts exist, the only man of honor- and determined that no conflicts exist, the only man of honor I heard at the last board meeting I was at was Assemblyman Chip Acuna, who recused on several matters. He didn't state his basis for recusal, but he recused. And I think the board should consider Assemblyman Chip Acuna's integrity and his standing for recusal. Leave it at that. Number four, I'll be brief. Pipeline does nothing to address vulnerability if storms or sea level rise. I mean, again, this invocation of Sandy, that's kind of like 9/11 and terrorism, you know? The thinking stops when you invoke these magical words. And I'll finish on this one, just like I'm... I don't know if this is correct or not, but I was flabbergasted by it. The South Jersey petition said that when New Jersey courts examine the nature of the public interest and the public convenience and necessity, those are the standards that the board makes decisions on the basis of, that when they use the word "public," the "public" doesn't mean the people that live in the towns that are getting preempted and losing their ability to go to a public hearing, ask a planning board member to look at a very local issue and come up with a very local solution that's kind of a give-and-take that happens at municipal planning boards' review process, that those "publics." Those people, which I consider the "public," particularly if a preemption provision is happening, and those people are gonna lose all those rights, that the courts have determined that, no, no, they're not the "public." The "public" is the people who are customers of the utility. So that would mean BL England, if there's 10 billion cubic feet of gas going through that line, if their interest, their 10 billion cubic feet outweigh a resident's interest to come forward and make an argument about that he doesn't want a visual impact from a pipeline infrastructure project. And if that's true, if that's the status of the law in New Jersey, then there's been a quiet revolution where we've lost our democracy, that commercial rights of customers of public utilities are superior to the democratic rights of residents in towns. That alone, and it was in one notches little backhanded sentence, and I'll gladly quote it to you when I submit written comments, but I was just, I mean, I couldn't, I think I walked a dog. Something like that. And these are serious issues, and I expect, whatever the board does with this, I don't wanna see, in any order, that Bill Wolf from Board of Town said that this was bad for the environment.
Margot Pellegrino. Margot Pellegrino. There's a lot to say, 'cause, you know, it really is kind of a funny thing that we're all here today, talking about something that, you know, has already been decided by the Pines Commission. But because, I guess, the powers that be, and apparently it's more than just South Jersey Gas and South Jersey Industries, because the powers that be that really want it, they're gonna shuffle the deck and rearrange things so that they can eventually win and get their way, kind of breaking the rules in a way. So it kind of makes me mad. I am a mom, and I make my kids follow the rules. And when I see this going on, it just, it really, really sticks and I crawl, you know? I'll tell you why, 'cause like from the get-go, I've been saying about the pipeline going through the Pines National Reserve. It was the Kmart version to run this pipeline, because you're dealing with one entity to govern for many, many miles, all right, 22. But still, it's a lot easier to go to one entity and shove it down their throat rather than go to a bunch of individual homeowners and municipalities and get their permission. So it kind of streamlines the process. It's also a wonderful way to avoid doing an actual study to show actual need. I mean, we keep hearing about the need, the need, the need. All right, show me the money and show me the studies, because if this pipeline were to go any other way, DEP would require, among other things, to have a show of need and actually an environmental impact statement. Because I'm sorry, I'm not satisfied by people like me who don't have a science degree getting up and saying, "This isn't gonna have an environmental impact." Oh gee. You know? Doctor so-and-so. Glad I don't go to you for my checkups. You know? I mean, we have people with credentials doing these studies for a purpose. So basically, you know, it didn't fly through the Pines Commission as people thought it would. And I'll tell you how I know that people thought it would, because one of the staff of the Commission was so upset, actually, she was also really upset at the time of the recusal of Ed Lloyd, that she just couldn't sit still in her chair and had to get up and leave. Another time, earlier in the process, in the summer, I believe, in 2013, I think it was, I have to go through my notes, one of my friends sent out a kind of funny email that could be misconstrued as an official press release, that kind of unofficially sort of said that the MOA was going to be decided at that point in time that summer, or very, like, close to a year before it was actually put before the Commission. So apparently Nancy Wittenberg, the executive director, actually was like on a rampage in the hallway yelling at my friend, "I wasted a whole day dealing with Trenton." So the political influence is a real concern in this project, and I really think on that basis alone, it should be halted, or at least looked at very closely. Never mind, you know, I didn't know what Bill Wolf mentioning, that the whole Energy Master Plan was going to be revisited, as it should be, because I don't live in a coastal town, I live in Medford Lakes. During Hurricane Sandy, and then again last year, we lost our power for about four days. And I really do hate to say that, no matter what the hell they're gonna be powering my power plant with, if my power lines go down, guess what? I don't got energy. So unless you're gonna fix that problem, and that would be a really good one for solar. We do have solar. We were able to cash in with that 50% thing, which really should, I think, be brought back, that rebate. And then maybe there should be incentives so that you can get that little thing to flip the switch and power your plants, because it's your own house. Because I think that if you're really looking at redundancy and resiliency, you're really going to start looking at shrinking the grid and encouraging people to provide as much energy as possible, to run efficiently, to run their homes as efficiently as possible. I mean, there's so many creative ways to do things, I just don't see why you have to keep doing the same old thing. So I really do hope you're considering in your new Energy Master Plan those types of things, because if you want true resiliency, you're gonna do it yourself. So that's just a couple of things that I would like to put forward for folks to think about on your end. And I do also want to say that I am a volunteer with the South Jersey Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation, and we do strongly oppose this plan, because also it's going to an outdated, aging power plant, being held, as I've heard, along the Grape Line with duct tape and glue, or chewing gum. And it's in a floodplain, and it violates the Clean Water Act, as it has been doing for decades now. So, you know, that is something that definitely concerns us, as well as the fact that the Pines National Reserve is an important watershed for our coastal resources, which we like to keep as pristine as possible in this extremely overdeveloped state. That is something that actually, believe it or not, people come from great distances to say. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Lena Smith, S-M-I-T-H, from Food and Water Watch. We are a consumer rights advocacy organization that champions healthy food and clean water. We oppose this pipeline and believe that it does not serve the public's interest or directly benefit the Pines, and the BPU should also uphold local home rule for the local municipalities. Bringing this fuel into our state endangers our families, property, and environment. Furthermore, the disastrous cumulative impacts of this pipeline project cannot be ignored, specifically the harmful impacts including water depletion, creation of toxic air emissions and wastewater, and contributing to the climate change crisis through the unregulated, unfettered, and overwhelming release of methane. Hurricane Sandy made it clear that New Jersey must oppose fuel sources that contribute to climate change, and highlights the ineptness of the name of the proposed pipeline. True energy reliability marked by energy security, independence, resilience, and affordability will derive from efficiency meeting energy needs with clean renewable power. We understand that natural gas burns cleaner than coal, and in that same view, the pipeline as a step, and that some view of the pipeline as a step forward, we maintain it is also two steps back. Natural gas offers next to no climate benefit compared to coal owing to emissions of methane, the primary component of natural gas and a potent greenhouse gas. And natural gas from the pipeline through the Pines won't just be displacing coal, it will be outcompeting clean and renewable energy solutions. We urge you to reject this pipeline and not facilitate any new sunk costs in infrastructure for more fossil fuels. And we are determined to help the state of New Jersey advance alternatives such as New Jersey Major or wind power mixed with energy efficiency technologies and smart conservation policies. That path does not put our communities, particularly the poor and most vulnerable Amaras, at risk for more environmental pollution. It will, in fact, create a multitude of jobs and stimulate needed economic growth for the state. This pipeline is wrong for New Jersey's clean energy future, and we urge you to support home rule and find this pipeline unnecessary for the region. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to, I'm not gonna reiterate what other people have said, I support the testimony of Jeff Tittlecarde Montgomery, David Pringle, Bill Wolf, Lena Smith just now, and others that's spoken before. I wanna make two points that I find particularly galling in this. One is that we are equating a breakage of 200-plus half-inch and 3/4-inch pipelines that go to people's houses on the barrier island with 15-plus-inch high-pressure transmission gas lines. The fact is that they are not equal. And whenever reliability is involved in this, and the name of Sandy is involved in this, it's deeply offensive to those people who had to deal with those exact, that whole emergency that played out over a couple of months. They are not equal, and if we could please not use the words "reliability" in this sense. If that's the case, then fix the 3/4-inch and half-inch pipeline that did break. The second point I'd like to make is that I would like to really see the evidence that supports the idea that this, that the pipeline to BL England plant is gonna produce more jobs than, say, a fully-developed offshore wind lease off the coast of Atlantic City that's going out for bid next month. So when people come up and say, "Oh, I support this because of my job," we really need to see the data that says that electricians, workers, ironworkers, union members who deserve to be paid a decent living wage, we need to see direct evidence from the BPU or from somebody that says that they're gonna, that they're going to have substantially more jobs by building a natural gas pipeline to this plant than they would having a fully-developed offshore wind lease. And until that data comes out, I don't think the BPU should make a decision on our energy future. And lastly, the way that I look at this, and this is, again, this is not a scientific thing here, but this is essentially, the BPU is playing a game, basically a grown-up game of the board game Risk. So what's going on here is that the BPU is involved in stacking the deck of putting natural gas generating stations at the varied points that prevent offshore wind and a clean energy future from happening in New Jersey. So the idea is that if you put all of your armies or all of your electrical generation where the wind might come onshore, you can prevent wind, or the fossil fuel advocates can prevent wind from coming on the state of New Jersey. And I think that that needs to really be, take, really take a look at that idea, and I think that maybe it is time to call for a moratorium so that we can take a look at, say, the countries that do do a very good job of promoting offshore wind and have had it become a rapidly increasing part of their electrical generation grid, we should see how, we should model our electrical generation grid on those countries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Timothy Karu, C-A-R-W. Good afternoon, thank you for taking the time. I am a business agent with IBW Local 351 with the Electrical Union. The IBW represents hundreds of families in the Cape May County area, some who are either here today or have spoken with me in support of this project. I am also a lifelong resident. I am not from North Jersey, I'm not from Central Jersey, I'm not from Left Jersey. I lived for 26 years right in the backyard of the BL England Power Plant, growing up. Now I live in Northfield. And we all know how long we've talked about the upgrade this plant was gonna get, and to finally have this at the doorstep now is a much-needed project. I've also fished and crapped that facility area for 40 years, and I can tell you the catches are as good now as they've ever been. The big one always gets away, I can't tell you the good ones or the bad ones, but the area is as strong as ever. The jobs created from this project will certainly be beneficial to all. We do believe that alternative energy certainly is an important part of the overall picture for energy source such as solar and wind, but with that, we need a source for electricity that we can rely on in all the environments we incur. With that comes the reliability and sustainability needed for the entire region that comes from this project, while giving the integrity much needed to the infrastructure of Cape May County. This is a common sense approach within the guidelines set forth to provide secure, clean, reliable, and affordable electric with a much-needed and overdue project. At this time, we're asking the Commission to move forward on the approvals necessary for this project, and I'd like to thank you again for taking the time for the public's input in such an important matter.
Thank you, sir. Steve Hummack.
My name's Steve Hummack, it's about H-U-M-A-N, ICK. I'm sorry. I missed my last, I apologize. Hummack, that's what you do. I'm a resident of Avalon, New Jersey, and fully at the building generating station. A little bit better? My name is Steve Hummack, it's about H-U-M-A-N, ICK, resident of Avalon, New Jersey. Working at the generating station there, Mark Moore, currently the IBW Union Shop steward. I'm here to speak on behalf of Charlie Hill, who is the IBW Local 210 Business Manager. I received a call from Charlie Hill this afternoon, and unfortunately, he's sick, not feeling well. So I'm gonna read what I hear from the fair, and which, of course, I do agree with as well. Good afternoon, Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Charlie Hill, and I'm the Business Manager for IBW Local 210. Local 210 represents approximately 54 employees at the building generating station. I'm here to speak today in support of the proposed pipeline. I speak in support of the gas pipeline for a number of reasons, which I'll briefly out. For a number of years, the future of BL England facility has been uncertain. For a number of years, the future of BL England generating station has been uncertain, and has caused deep concern among the workers in the facility. When word of the proposed gas pipeline came out, it gave renewed hope to approximately 70 employees at the plant that they had a chance to continue their employment at the facility instead of a certain trip to the unemployment office. I will offer to you today that without the gas pipeline, the plant would shortly close, and those very employees will be making the dreadful trip to the unemployment office. This project ensures that the building facility will be supplied with fuel source that will allow it to continue to provide the much-needed locally-generated electric power because of the lifeblood of our area, with a cleaner and more environmentally friendly fuel source. Also, the gas pipeline will provide a solid supply of natural gas for thousands of customers in Cape May County. In addition, the gas pipeline will maintain good paying, quality jobs in South Jersey, as well as creating work for many who are during the construction process. Let me sum up both good, I see from this gas pipeline being built. Maintaining jobs at BL England Station, creating jobs during the construction, improving gas reliability to Cape May County, converting a coal-fired facility to a clean gas-fired electric generating facility within South Jersey, and having it available in the event of a weather or other unexpected emergency. of a weather or other unexpected emergency. After working for Lancy Electric for over 38 years, I understand the value of and the need for electric generating facilities and infrastructure upgrades in Southern New Jersey. Closing, I fully support the proposed pipeline as a South Jersey resident and as the Business Manager of BL England Local 210.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Fenchel?
Good afternoon. I must say that...
Can I hear you?
Oh, yeah. I'm Dr. Stephen Uve Fenchel, F E N I C H E L. And we live downwind from BL England Plant in the Bushes and Hatters. And, no, Commissioner Fear Delicio, you prefaced the meeting with saying how people shouldn't feel cheated if they don't get a chance to make a moral comment that they will have an opportunity to send written comments. I must say, I do believe that it's been a big con for the most part that's being promulgated by the BPU Commission. It's a betrayal of the public interest on behalf of the corporate interest of South Jersey Gas and BL England. And God knows, I would like so much to be disabused of the cynicism that I feel. But it all stems from that meeting that was chaired here before in upper township by Commissioner Fear Delicio on June 17, 2015. And I must say, at that meeting, it was so wonderful to hear the Commissioner assure the 100-plus attendees that their presence was very appreciated by him. Anything that the people had to say would be recorded and was important in the decision by the BPU Commission. With his additional assurance that he would not gavel any citizen making a statement, I believe that the public was totally empowered to speak from their hearts and that they did. There were, after more than 40 hours of testimony, about 50, 60 public citizens with no agendas, spoke eloquently against the South Jersey Gas Pipeline. And by my count, there were six speaking for it, salaries and job descriptions demanded that they come forward. There were the Chamber of Commerce people, there were two upper township council members, and there were the, there were one or two union members. The July 22, 2015 meeting, I had to attend because I truly was energized by what appeared to me to be the integrity and sincerity of Commissioner Fear Delicio. And there threatened, it was no discussion whatsoever, none of the evidence that was submitted, and in fact, I believe Commissioner Fear Delicio introduced the resolution that was voted on quicker than you could say Jackie Robinson approving the South Jersey Gas Pipeline. So I am under no expectations that honesty plays a role in this sort of a hearing. At that very BPU meeting, I was able to come up to Mr. Fear Delicio and ask him what discussions took place at BPU regarding all the public comments so eloquently, eloquently made by public citizens? And what about the evidence submitted in writing? And Commissioner Fear Delicio attempted to reassure me that there were vigorous discussions that had taken place at the BPU. And I said, "Fine, I would be grateful to have copies of the transcripts since the matter's already been voted on." At which point I was sort of taken aback by the comment that you'd have me breaking the law? We can't have anything like that because it would be an infraction of something to do with quarrels. And my goodness, you know, it's like, it's really, really a pathetic state of affairs. I don't know whether I appeared so naively ignorant to ever accept that as an excuse, but it just, I found to be a very bittering moment because some of the more experienced people amongst our group said, "The BPU is not going to do the right thing." And I said, "Yes, yes, didn't you see the sincerity of Commissioner Fear Delicio?" And I know that he was very angry at whether it was now retrospective sham or whatever with the lawyer doing a Perry Mason thing before that meeting back in July, in June. But be that as it may, I'm not the same person as I was before. And I don't even begrudge the $130,000 to $140,000 salaries that our BPU commissioners on average make. But only if they were serving the public interest and not their political masters basically pick them, I believe, to serve on the BPU to satisfy whatever corporate donors may require. And it's totally wrong because the BPU seems to be something that is established to rubber stamp so that it puts another layer of opacity between what the politicians want done and what the corporates want them to see gets done by having this meaningless commission that is there just to facilitate whatever needs to be facilitated. And, you know, I submitted documents that I got through some of my contacts in my organizations, Physicians for Social Responsibility, and I'm so sick and tired of hearing how this fracked gas is going to be clean. I sent you documents, sir, to you and your commissioners who spoke about it, I guess, in little groups less than a core around the hall somewhere, about how the ultrafine particles of fracked gas is believed to play a significant role in Alzheimer's and Parkinson's disease because these ultrafine particles, much smaller than the larger particles emitted with the combustion of coal, are able to get by the nasal hairs and go directly to the brain. But none of this seems to really matter. I really feel that if we weren't living in such a bizarre world for anyone who's read Superman as a kid, you know, the closer of this whole thing would have been Bill Wolf's testimony. And that would be all that you need if you're looking for truth and a reason to do the right thing. This is another opportunity and I do hope and pray that you and your colleagues on the BPU don't piss it away as the last time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, Commissioner. My first name is spelled E M I L E, last name is DeVito, D E V I T O. Manager of Science and Stewardship New Jersey Conservation Foundation. The New Jersey Conservation Foundation is a statewide nonprofit organization. We've helped to preserve over 130,000 acres throughout the state of New Jersey, including almost 20,000 acres in Southern New Jersey in the last 10 years. We're very concerned about the proliferation of unplanned pipelines throughout the state of New Jersey, including South Jersey Gas and many others. We feel that they threaten our land and our water and our wildlife and our communities of people. The need for additional gas and pipelines has not been proven. According to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, natural gas demand will essentially be flat in New Jersey out to 2040. Nearly three-fourths of all New Jersey homes are already served by natural gas. A recent report by the Union of Concerned Scientists has identified New Jersey as one of a number of states at risk of over-reliance on natural gas, exposing ratepayers and investors to a risk of billions of dollars' worth of underused, idle, or even abandoned plants and pipelines. We need to reduce our reliance on natural gas, not increase it. Converting the BL England Plant to natural gas is not needed to meet our energy needs. Excuse me. Furthermore, by converting the plant from part-time to full-time electric generation, it would actually increase emissions and not reduce them. And in addition, someone earlier talked about methane versus carbon dioxide. Methane is a far worse greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. In the short term, it's dozens of times, one molecule of methane is dozens of times worse than one molecule of carbon dioxide. Science also tells us that the location of the BL England Plant will soon be underwater. Just look at that map, look where the plant is. It's on a salt marsh at sea level. It's called Beasley's Point because it's in a place that's been disappearing for centuries. That's why it's a point. It's perched at sea level. Sea level will rise at least four feet, more likely eight to 12 feet in the next 75 years. That place will be gone. Ignoring science and investing public dollars in a certain path of not only future storms but sea level rise itself, it's an example of human arrogance, hubris, and complete irresponsibility. There are better ways to meet our energy needs and create jobs through clean renewable energy projects like wind and solar and sustainable locations. Additional fossil fuel infrastructure should receive the highest level of scrutiny to determine if the public need exists, to assess cumulative impacts to our environment and our communities throughout the entire state. Every single one of the probably nearly a dozen proposals that's out there right now should all be evaluated as one gigantic project with all the cumulative impacts considered. The BPU should not overrule local land use regulations for a pipeline that has not received that level of local review, has not been proven to be a public necessity. It's especially true given the threats posed to the internationally significant Pylons National Reserve and the integrity of the comprehensive management plan established for the pylons over 30 years ago and never being threatened with being undermined in this way before. The pylons National Reserve is a treasure. If not for steady application of the pylons statute and rules over the past 35 years, it would look much different today. And this proposal threatens to undermine everything that we've accomplished since the enactment of the pylons act. This proposal takes this town the wrong path and we urge you to reject it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Jonathan Atwood, I'm here representing Senator Andrew. Jonathan Atwood, A T W O O D, representing Senator Jeff Andrew and Assemblyman Andrew Zach. Here, Commissioner, we apologize for not being able to attend today's hearing on South Jersey Gas's application, but we wanted to express to you directly our support for this project. First of all, without this pipeline, as you all well know, this plant would be forced to close, but BL England Plant would be forced to close per the order by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for deceased coal burning operations. Plant employs dozens of people whose jobs would be lost should the plant be forced to close. In addition, the project would create additional construction jobs. To lose these jobs in such an economically depressed area of the state would be shameful. South Jersey, particularly Cape Bay, Cumberland, and Atlantic Counties, some of the areas most adversely affected by the current economic recession in this country. There are six, 18th, and 21st respectively in unemployment in the country. This region is one of the lowest per capita income rates in the nation. We strongly believe in renewable energy. We've been very outspoken in our support of wind and solar energy and have made a personal commitment to these sources. Unfortunately, a number of studies have been conducted and determined that the BL England location would not support a wind energy facility, as the typical windswee there is too low. Until these and other sources of alternative energy are viable enough to support our needs, we will still need to rely on other, more typical ones. Natural gas is one of the cleaner sources available to us. It's also significantly cleaner than coal. By converting the plant to natural gas, it would result in much less toxic greenhouse gas emissions. The United States has an abundance of natural gas reserves. Excuse me, plenty of gold. Relying upon it will provide our country with more energy independence and less dependence on countries that do not share our values on human rights and the environment. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, there's currently only one line for natural gas running to South Jersey, Cape Bay County. If anything should happen to that pipeline, our entire area could be without gas to heat our homes, cook our meals, for several months until it could be repaired. We believe, pardon me, that the proposed pipeline is a common sense, clean and efficient way to increase our position in the energy grid. It's a way to ensure even the slightest bit of economic development in an area of the state with some of the highest unemployment and lowest per capita income in the country. This area is one of the worst year-round job markets around. It's been consistently in the bottom statistically in both graduation and health rates. We must do more. We are losing more and more of our young people every year as they move away from our beautiful area. Our middle-line working class continues to shrink. We need to put our thinking caps on and come up with bold new ideas to stimulate our year-round economy. This project will not do that in one fell swoop, but it would be a significant step in the right direction. Based on all the reasons we outlined below, above, as well as the overwhelming need or will benefit to the residents of South Jersey, we pledge our unwavering commitment to this project. Thank you for providing us the time to articulate views on this important topic. Sincerely, Senator Jeff Andrew and Assemblyman Bobby McSack.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Eric Dolson, or is it G N? I'm sorry.
Dolson.
Dolson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Eric Dolson, spelled A D O L F S D N. I'm the plant manager at the BL England Generating Station. And I'm on heat. I'm here to speak on behalf of both current and past employees of BL England Station. I would like to address the importance of BL England to the community from my experiences over the years. And I want to provide an operator's perspective to this discussion, so please allow me to talk about some of my experience. I've worked at BL England Station for 34 years. Among those positions held was the Operations Manager. Like others at the station responsible for operating the bulk electric system, I am PJM System Operator Certified. For decades, I've been involved with planning for and then operating through enormous storms and high-mood emergencies. This role involved direct communications and coordination with the Atlantic City Electric System Operations Center and PJM Dispatches and Reliability Engineers. I'm also the primary compliance MIR manager. In summary, I've gained extensive experience and knowledge with operating the bulk electric system. For clarification for the audience as defined by FER, the transmission system is only the transmission system is only one part of bulk electric system. Generators are another major part. Each will not operate without the other. Over the years, B.L. England's units have always been requested to operate for system security through the planning process. For every heat wave and for every maximum load situation, every blizzard, every polar vortex, and every nor'easter and every hurricane, B.L. England Station has been asked to operate for system security. That continues today, despite the fact we are a private, independent, and power producer. Hurricane Sandy was just one of many examples. I'd like to point out that when Cape May County, in order to evacuate, B.L. England employees went to work and operated the plant through the storm. I assure you, we were not running for economics, but for system security. Every storm is unique in its own way, and the planning and design of the bulk electric system must take that into account. Generator and transmission adages must also be taken into account. I recall at one point during Hurricane Sandy that B.L. England was asked to hold down loads because so many transmission lines were out of service. We could not export power to support other regions, and vice versa. Power could not be imported. In essence, B.L. England was carrying a local region. On June 23rd of this year, a storm with high winds rolled into southern New Jersey and decimated the transmission distribution systems. The region experienced 20 damaged transmission lines, five damaged substations, 372 wires were down, and 280,000 customers were out of service. The storm's impact cascaded all the way to B.L. England's substation as one of the main 138-kV lines at B.L. England tripped out. Atlantic Electric was in such dire straits for generation that we were asked to operate our emergency generators. There are sound economic and engineering reasons why generation needs to be located at the source of the load. For this region, B.L. England Station is that location. But from my experience, as mentioned in the examples above, there are also system operational reasons also. All combustion turbines in the area have been shut down. Pope Creek is retiring in 2019. If B.L. England retires, then there will be no power generation existing in the entire region. Significant transmission adages are a proven reality, and they will continue to occur. Without the pipeline and the repowering projects, there will be no margin for transmission adages in an area known for its spore. High-low conditions, such as heat waves and polar vortexes, present their own unique issues. Among them overloaded lines, voltage control, fuel supply issues. During these events, B.L. England is requested to not only provide maximum generation, but also reactive support required to maintain the system. Regional generation shortages did occur during the winter of 2014. It should be understood by PJM Roy. The region's short in generation is required to conduct rolling brownouts. I point out at a time when power is most needed. In closing, in my experience, for the safety and welfare of the public, the pipeline needs to be installed, and B.L. England needs to be. We must continue to invest in the critical infrastructure of the Pineland region in southern New Jersey. This project is also beneficial to the environment, providing a state-of-the-art, high-efficiency generating unit and emission controls and burning clean natural gas. I hope that this privileged opportunity for B.L. England to serve the community will continue for the foreseeable future. I thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, sir. Raven Towsky there. Oh, yes. Rick Baynton.
My name is Rick Baynton, B-A-Y-N-T-O-N. Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
And welcome to Cape May County.
Thank you.
I like to think we're friendly down here. I know a lot of folks here got different views than maybe I do on things. And as my boss just spoke on reliability. There's a lot going on here. People are very passionate about it. And I understand that. It is jobs. That's a real thing for all of us. B.L. England Station would provide a rock-solid base to be able to build on, not only for the generation provided by the clean, very natural gas, but also for other renewables that everybody seems to be in favor of. For these reasons, I'm sharing, I'm standing in support of the B.L. England Repowering Project and of the chosen gas pipeline. There's a lot of talk about safety in pipelines. Pipeline safety is really good out there. A lot of people maybe not believe that that are here, but it's well thought out. This small amount of the Pinelands Commission, I mean of the Pinelands that's gone through, I understand it's sacred to a lot of people. It's such a small environmental impact. Whereas if you go in, you won't even know what side of the road it was buried on two years from now. We have to have power somewhere. People are opposed to coal. People are opposed to fracking. People are opposed to gas. But we have to have power. And we're not ready for complete decentralized power yet. Where everybody would have a rooftop, yeah, a great idea, but that's some people talk about here. And taking matters into your own hands is a good thing. Not everybody can afford that. So in closing, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to speak here. And I know you have tough decisions to make. I hope it's not political. I hope they're well thought out. And I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Doug O'Malley.
Sorry. I have the thermostat. It's a little warm in here. Can I have the air on? Can I have a work understat? Doug O'Malley, there you are.
I certainly aspire to keep rising in this room. Doug, D-O-U-G. O'Malley, O, possibly capital N, A-L-L-E-Y. I'm the Director of Environment in New Jersey. We represent more than 20,000 citizen members across this state. Today's groundhog, because this South Jersey Gas Pipeline is the exact pipeline the Pinelands Commission has rejected. And this is obviously a very similar room, not the exact one, but a very similar room and very similar form that we had earlier this summer. I want to thank you directly, Commissioner Fairlissell, for once again being the hearing officer at this particular hearing. However, considering the amount of public comment we heard in June, and clearly the amount of public comment we've already heard, of course, the last, of course, the last two and a half hours and will hear again throughout the 6pm hearing, I would think it is urgent that all BPU commissioners attend and be present at this public hearing. We previously heard the skepticism from the public regarding the process that resulted out of that June hearing. And that skepticism is not ill-placed because there was, you know, fate. At that July meeting, the BPU was unanimous vote. President Rose made the one statement. And within three and a half, four minutes, the process was over. Contrast that with what we saw at the Pinelands Commission. And I think this is a critical point here because the BPU should not be serving as the handmaid of South Jersey Gas. And the Pinelands Commission rejected, in a deadlock vote in January 2014, this pipeline. Nothing has changed with this application, other than the intent of South Jersey Gas to really get this pipeline through. And what we've seen at the Pinelands Commission, you know, really is a scene of a crime because you literally have had a democratic process, a democratic commissioners who were appointed, who debated over not only hours, but months and months of hearings. And then those commissioners had a very public process, a public debate, a longer hearing process than this particular process we're in right now. And that entire process is essentially being called bunk by the Pinelands Commission staff. It's a mutiny of the Pinelands Commission staff. And it goes against the intent, not only of the Pinelands commissioners, but the intent of the Pinelands Act when it was initially conceived over 35 years ago in the late 70s. And I think it's critical to know that Pinelands was created because of the threat of gas infrastructure and the fact that you could four bipartisan governors weighing in in December 2013 and saying, "There's always going to be another project." Those voices need to be heard. They need to be heard, not only at the Pinelands Commission, but also here at the BPU. Now, clearly, there's been a lot of discussion already over the last two and a half hours of this plant, of its air quality, of the energy impact. I want to touch on some very relevant aspects, some that we've heard and some that we have not. One, the fact of, you know, we currently are still under the 2011 Energy Master Plan. As you well know, there's been a process all throughout the summer on revising the Energy Master Plan. There's no, obviously, document to comment on, and obviously, there's still no document to comment on. So we'll have to go back to the 2011 plan. The 2011 plan does refer to the Global Warming Response Act, although obviously not as much as the CHIR. And to be clear, the Energy Master Plan is not, is a plan. It does not have the same force of law as the Global Warming Response Act, which requires emissions reduction of 80% by 2050. That obviously should be one of the guiding lights of the Board of Public Utilities. Clearly, that has not happened under Chris administration, but that does not necessarily mean that this board can simply ignore the law. The 2011 plan also talked about offshore wind. We had, we've heard a lot about this. I want to kind of put a finer point. There is going to be a federal auction process finally on November 9. That's obviously a tremendous amount of anticipation around that. Obviously, offshore wind won't really be able to go forward until the BPU itself moves forward with offshore wind rules. I clearly would love to have more public hearings and updates on the consultant process that President Rose talked about this summer. I also want to talk more about the strategy of the Chris administration and the EUP on reliance on gas. In a recent study from the Union of Concerned Scientists, saying that New Jersey was one of 16 states with an over-reliance on gas. And that's actually, comes as no surprise. Obviously, there's four new gas plants that have been proposed. We clearly are being targeted by the gas industry. I think it needs to be said here that this plant is not being discussed because we have an energy need. PJM is a regional grid, as you well know. And this plant provides an infinitesimal amount of energy on the overall grid. And specifically, some of the statements that were made in the Pinelands Commission's process by NGDP really need to be looked at in independent analysis. We've heard again and again, debate kind of point countermind, you know, the plant's going to be cleaner, the plant's going to be dirtier. I just want to state the fact, B.L. England moved from a peaker facility, running part-time, to running all the time. Clearly, there's going to be an air pollution impact if you're running a fossil fuel facility 365 days a year. You say nothing of the fact that it'll re-power B.L. England, being the number-one source of global warming pollution in South Jersey.
Could you excuse me, woman?
Sure.
I'm noticing a number of people walking in. I assume they're for the 6 o'clock hearing. We're still in the 3 o'clock hearing. So the 6 o'clock hearing is already being delayed until we get through all the chambers to the 6 o'clock or the 3 o'clock hearing. Heat has been turned off. Thermostat wouldn't have done the same good. The building folks did turn the heat off.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Sure. You know, that's, that's obviously, you know, speaks to kind of a broader problem we have right now, which is the importance of having independent analysis of this particular project and really all projects. One of the concerns that was raised at the Pinelands Commission and should be raised in this process is that there's a tremendous reliance on South Jersey Gas's, you know, analysis. There was not an independent environment analysis of this particular pipeline. But more broadly, we have a problem with gas companies flooding the zone, as it were. And specifically with the Pinelands Commission. It's not just South Jersey Gas. It's also New Jersey natural gas. And the process that we've seen of the Pineland Preservation Alliance using Oprah requests and FOIA requests to examine the emails and the interchange between South Jersey Gas and the Pinelands Commission staff, that clearly showed that the Pinelands commissioners were kept out of the dark of South Jersey Gas's, South Jersey Gas's negotiation with New Jersey natural gas. A very similar process, except with the joint base. And that process is clearly designed to get around the strict rules of the Pinelands Commission. And while this might seem off-topic, this is incredibly germane because at the end of the day, the BPU is being asked to be the deciding factor on the comprehensive management plan for the Pinelands. Obviously, the BPU does not, that's not what's in the BPU's mission. And that's part of the reason that advocates like ourselves are calling for moratorium, not just on this particular pipeline, but on all pipelines across New Jersey. Because clearly, we're seeing a lack of independent environment analysis. Obviously, seeing a literal explosion of gas pipelines and projects around the state. And the BPU should not act as its federal partner, FERC, does in literally rubber-stamping every pipeline project that comes in front of it. I want to wrap up by talking about something that actually is very apropos for where we are right now, which is the fact that clearly, by having the thermostat on, when we have a lot of body heat in the room, it's not exactly energy-efficient. And when we're talking about meeting New Jersey's energy needs, as is referenced in the Energy Master Plan, with, at least partially through CHP, if we're talking about really tackling New Jersey's energy needs, we need to be looking at energy efficiency. And specifically, we want to be talking about economic growth, jobs, and saving the environment. The best investment, of course, is energy efficiency and weatherization programs. That, the best way to do that is through the Clean Energy Fund, which has been rated to the tune of over $1 billion over the last five fiscal years by the Chris administration. That is the best way to tackle our energy crisis in New Jersey, not to build a gas pipeline to the heart of Pinelands and re-power a fossil fuel dinosaur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. No? Hold on once. The next name, I'm sorry, I think the last name is Hay.
Hay, George.
If that's George, okay, yes, he can. And you?
George Hay, a resident of Summers Point, formerly of Ocean City.
I'm sorry, I'm cutting in with the logistics.
George Hay, Summers Point, private citizen, formerly of Ocean City, in the Ocean City Utility Advisory Board. I followed the Beale England probably back as far as 1989, and coming back from California to look at distributed alternatives on Ocean City. And when I was on the advisory board, I, with Robert Barr, the Pinelands Commission of Ocean City, Senator Ron Drew's staff, I tried very hard to get a look at a systems integration of offshore wind, municipal distributed power, the future of the England effort going, and I met massive resistance on that project. This was about 2010. And when I went out to visit on behalf of Ocean City, South Jersey Gas, Colson, yeah, I began to realize something was going on in that timeframe, and I didn't realize until this project emerged, what it was, which was ultimately this repowering project. Uh, my background is as a professional analyst, systems planner, and research manager. I manage consortiums of electric utilities in California nationally, in Europe, looking at gas turbines, natural gas strategies, renewables, and energy efficiency. One of the things on the specific issue here today of the home rule, one of the reasons I moved back to New Jersey is I really love all the 566 small towns and things of that nature, and I would urge the VPU to reject, or at least defer, a decision on this until the voters of each of the three towns have had a referendum to vote on the matter, to let their, their voices be heard, and to remove any instance that it's perhaps political contributions or other things at work that are, that are making the decisions for them. People that I know that live in upper township, and by the way, I was in Ocean City during Hurricane Sandy, I was one of the fools who didn't leave, but I had power and gas through the, through the ordeal there, the areas of town that went out with the local distribution system, and had nothing to do with the bulk of the power system. But friends that I know in upper township, some of which I encouraged to be here, but they were really afraid, because it just seems the pressure, locally, politically, business interests are so strong, they hadn't received notification of where the pipeline's going near their house, what impacts it may have on their housing value, their inconstrict inconvenience on traffic during construction, during the summer tourist season, their homeowner's insurance. They checked with three different lawyers locally to raise the matter, and all three of them had conflicts of interest. So there's a heck of a lot of money floating around on this project. But I would, I would, for better or worse, if, if, if their, their rights are going to be exerted, decisions on this matter today should be really deferred until they have a referendum in those three towns to vote on the matter. On the subject of the power plant specifically, I too have been studying the state Energy Master Plan, and, uh, it really seems that there's a problem in New Jersey of the regulated and unregulated sides of the businesses doing, uh, both businesses within the same state. I see PSENG, New Jersey Gas, South Jersey Gas, working on pipelines to come from Pennsylvania, and then working to create power plant markets. And the Energy Master Plan had 2,000 megawatts of projects, most of them justified on retiring the Moisler Creek, that's 500 megawatts. Now it's up to about 4,000 megawatts of high-capacity factor PJM baseload level plants. Uh, so it's almost like each of the gas companies in New Jersey has its kind of piece of the pie, and it seems a very systematic, almost collusionary strategy to implement this, of which this is just one piece. Uh, I strongly oppose the project because of the pine barrens component, but I also strongly oppose it because I think there are other solutions to the problem of both gas and electric reliability. Uh, as Jeff Tittle had said, currently only two of the units are operating at about 310 megawatts, uh, using the existing gas infrastructure that's available during the summer. They could bring natural gas with gas storage at that site, and continue to use it as a peaker, and I think that's what would the intent, when they met shifting from coal to gas, it was within the same plant for the same duty cycle. Uh, the current plan is to replace that 310 that's now fired on oil with a 450-megawatt, possibly ultimately a 700-megawatt plant, that gas turbines use the 423 PSI, that's a 24-inch pipeline, uh, supplies, it eliminates the need for a compressor station at the plant site. That pipeline's much bigger than the existing cap, pipeline surrogate payment county. So from a South Jersey Gas ratepayer point of view, I wrote a letter to the ratepayer advocate, and I heard the same blurb back and letter back, that they don't deal with prudency, the decision's already been made, they just deal with the prudency that it's unconstructed. And I find that horrendous, that, at least in the documents that I've seen, that ninety percent of this project is going to be paid for with South Jersey Gas ratepayer money, and ten percent is for the, the project. And no alternatives to gas reliability are being considered, uh, no alternatives to this project on the electric side, forget all the environmental issues. Uh, but it just seems that the ratepayer shouldn't be stuck with this, which sort of leads me to, where is Rockland Energy in this? We keep hearing about this power plant, but I've not at any of these hearings seen them here, they don't seem to come. What bothers me about that is they're represented by the same law firm as the former New York Court Authority president. Currently, there's one investigation, Bridgegate, that occurred the day before the Pinelands decision. There was another investigation going on now of United Airlines, and this looks very similar to an abuse of power that's going on, and I, I, it wouldn't surprise me if those investigations shift into this area, given the many, many conflicts of interest that seem to exist with all the different players in the project. A couple of other things, just, uh, points. I really think on the jobs issue, a new combined cycle at that site would take about twenty jobs to run versus the seventy that are there now. So if they could keep the existing plant operating with natural gas, with the existing infrastructure, they would manage to keep those jobs, keep their tax ratables, they wouldn't need this pipeline paid for with the ratepayer, ratepayer dollars and causing all this environmental damage. Generally, I support what Jeff Tittle, Bill Wolf, and Doug O'Malley have said, I think they have some really excellent insight. I really think we need to step back, take our time on these issues, and really get to the truth of the matter, if this is needed, and particularly on today's hearing, the voters of these three towns ought to be given a referendum opportunity to look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. [applause] This is the last speaker that I had for the three o'clock hearing, and I'll explain what we're going to do after you make your comments, sir.
All right. Doug Cosadon, C-O-S-S-A-D-O-O-N.
That's it, okay.
Uh, I'm with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 825.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
I represent the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 825, we have six to 500 members, with men and women, across New Jersey and part of New York, and I'm also local resident here. Uh, I've worked on these pipelines, we've done very safely, uh, technology's advanced, I also feel that the, uh, the land heals itself pretty readily. Uh, we do a very good job of conserving the soils, and, uh, this, this particular pipeline doesn't really do much deforestation, so there's really not a big issue there. Uh, and I can tell you from experience, we have a lot of skilled people that, that do this work, and, uh, raise their families here, and all the construction jobs are very important to us. And, uh, you know, the power plant, uh, the refitting of it requires a lot of man-hours, and, uh, engineers and electrical companies that work with that, all those kind of things. Uh, again, the technology is there, and we have to move forward with our, uh, infrastructure. Any strong nation has a strong infrastructure, includes roads, bridges, you know, your water, your sewer, everybody, you know, wants to flush the toilet, they don't care where it goes, but it goes somewhere. That goes with the power we have, so you have to, you want to turn the light on, we have that, that sort of energy. And natural gas, I feel, is one of the best sources that we have now. The renewables, they're a great thing, but like, uh, Great Adventure recently wanted to, uh, put some solar farm in it, and they went 90 acres, while there was an outcry of the amount of deforestation required for that. So, there's, there's drawback with any power source. Nuclear has its problems, hydroelectric has its problems, wind power, there's just recently in news, uh, wind farm got shot down because of the land, so apparently for, I guess, the financial plan for it. So all these things are good things, but we have to find a place. And in closing, I'd just like to, uh, support the pipeline, and I hope the, uh, work of the utilities will move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have gone through the, uh, we have gone through the entire list of speakers that we have for the three o'clock, uh, public hearing. I just want to reiterate a couple of things. Number one, written comments can be submitted, and they can be submitted. Board Secretary Irene Kim Asbury, as a Board of Public Utilities, 44 South Clinton Avenue, on the floor, post office box 350, Trenton, New Jersey, 08625-0350. And also email comments to board secretary@vpu.state nj.us. Those of you who are, and with that, I'm going to close the three o'clock hearing. Those of you who are here for the six o'clock hearing, uh, we will resume at 6:15, just to give the court recorder the ability to find her fingers again. And, uh, there is a sign-up sheet out in the lobby for anyone who's here for the six o'clock hearing. So this three o'clock hearing is adjourned. Some of us have, you know, certain facilities, and, uh, and your fingers haven't been rejuvenated. So, uh, we are coming to begin the six o'clock hearing. And I want to say good evening, and thank you for coming out. My name is Joe Ferriero Liso. I am a commissioner at the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities. If we could maybe close that door, so we, a lot of noise. Thank you. Again, my name is Joe Ferriero Liso, I'm a commissioner on the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, and I've been designated to serve as the presiding officer in this matter. As you heard, this is the second, uh, of our two hearings here in upper township today. The time and place for this public hearing was published in newspapers, in general circulation within the service territory of South Jersey Gas Company. The purpose of this public hearing is to take comments on a petition filed by South Jersey Gas, in the matter of petition of South Jersey Gas Company for determination pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 40:55D-19. It makes the Board of Public Utility docket number G013111049. South Jersey Gas filed this petition on or about October 31st, 2013, requesting that the Board issue an order pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-19, which is New Jersey's Municipal Land Use Law. The petition asks the Board to find that the construction of the natural gas pipeline through Maurice River Township in Cumberland County, city of Estelle Manor in Atlantic County, and upper township in Cape May County, New Jersey, is reasonably necessary for the service, convenience, or welfare of the public. If, if the Board makes that finding, then the zoning, site plan review, and all other municipal land use ordinances and regulations of those towns, under the Municipal Land Use Law of New Jersey, shall not apply to this pipeline. Board of Public Utilities will be ruling solely on the land use matter, specifically whether local zoning laws will apply to this project. By order dated, excuse me, December 18th, 2013, the Board retained this matter for hearing and designated me as the presiding officer with the authority to establish and modify schedules, decide law motions, and otherwise control the conduct of this case, subject to Board of Public Utility ratification. A public hearing was previously held on this petition on December 18th, 2013, in upper township. South Jersey Gas has filed other petitions related to the proposed project. South Jersey Gas filed a petition with the Board on March 8th, 2013, for authority pursuant to NJAC 14:1.4, to install and operate the proposed pipeline, including those sections passing within 100 feet of buildings intended for human occupancy. A public hearing was conducted on that petition on May 1st, 2013, also in upper township. By order dated June 21st, 2013, the Board of Public Utilities authorized the construction of the proposed pipeline as proposed by South Jersey Gas. On October 20th, 2014, South Jersey Gas filed a petition for an amended order, requesting two changes to the Board's order of June 21st, 2013. One, that a provision be added that no good customers could be connected to the pipeline within the area designated as the forest area under the Pinelands Comprehensive Management Plan. And two, that the Board approve a change in the location of the point of interconnection and the regulator station from Marshall Avenue in upper township to Mount Pleasant, Tuckahoe Road in upper township, which moved the regulator station from the forest area of the Pinelands to a less restrictive area of the Pinelands outside of the forest area. A public hearing was conducted on those two requested amendments on June 17th, 2015, also in upper township. The Board granted South Jersey Gas, uh, Gas's request for an amended order on July 22nd, 2015. As stated, this matter will come back to the Board to vote on the application as to whether the zoning and municipal land use ordinances of the three towns where the pipeline has been approved do not apply. Nevertheless, this hearing is available for you to express all of your views. I am open, open to receiving all of your comments and statements today. All statements made at this hearing are being aesthetographically recorded, from which a typed transcript will be produced and made part of the record, which shall be available for review by all members of the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities. In addition, a copy of the transcript of this public hearing will be provided to the Pinelands Commission staff at their request for their review of the statements made at this public hearing. As a matter of procedure for this evening's hearing, first, I will ask the parties to this matter to place their appearances on the record and afford them an opportunity to make a short opening statement, should they choose to do so. Then I will open the record to any member of the public who wish to make a statement for the record. As I said, sign-in sheets are out in the lobby, and I ask that you sign that, that letter. As I said, sign in sheets are out in the lobby, and I ask that you sign that sheet if you want to make a public statement. Also keep in mind that written statements will also be accepted either this evening or they can also be submitted to the Board Secretary Irene Kim Asbury at the Board of Public Utilities, 44 South Clinton Avenue, 9th floor, Post Office Box 350, Trenton, New They can also be submitted to the Board via email, and the email address is board secretary at ptu.state nj.us. Please include the name of the petition and the docket number in your correspondence when submitting comments. I ask that you submit any written comments no later than Monday, October 26, 2015. After the folks make their presence on the record, I will open the hearing to the public, and I ask that when you do come up, that you leave your name and if you would spell your last name for the reporters so that we have it correct in the record. And I will also ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible. There's no time limit, but I ask you to keep them as brief as possible because other folks would also like to make comments. So out of respect for our fellow citizens, if you can just kind of direct your comments to what we're here for this evening. All that being said, I will now ask the parties to state their appearance for the record. South Jersey Gas?
Thank you, Commissioner. Ira Meddell, a member of the firm of Coastal Partners.
I'm the Deputy Prosecutor for South Jersey Gas.
Thank you. Ray Council?
Thank you, Commissioner Henry Ogden, Assistant Deputy Ray Council on behalf of the New Jersey Division of Ray Council.
Board Staff?
Thank you, Commissioner. Paul Flanagan, Executive Director on behalf of Board Staff.
Thank you very much. South Jersey Gas, do you have any opening statements? Nothing more than what I had said earlier today, other than, Commissioner, I would like to note that the Pinelands Commission has published notice on its website that comments pertaining to the Pinelands Comprehensive Management Plan may be submitted as part of these public hearings that are being held today, and the transcript of the hearing will be provided to the Pinelands Commission. Thank you very much. Ray Council, do you have anything to say?
Yes, very briefly. Thanks, Commissioner. Good evening. My name is Henry Ogden. I'm an Assistant Deputy Ray Council representing the New Jersey Division of Ray Council. Our office was created by the New Jersey Legislature to represent all New Jersey rate payers in matters of public utility rates and services. As you've heard, the pipeline is about 22 miles running through three municipalities. The line is meant to provide reliability to customers in Atlantic and Cape May Counties, and then a dedicated line providing natural gas to the B.L. England facility. While the company is not seeking to raise rates at this time, they will eventually seek recovery of the reliability portion of the pipeline costs in a future rate proceeding if this project is approved. Our office will then conduct a complete investigation of the company's petition based upon the information supplied and updated by the company. We will retain the services of expert consultants to assist us in our review. In our inquiry, we'll be focused on the issue of whether or not the pipeline was constructed in prudent and reasonable fashion so that the rate payers pay the lowest possible rates in the system with receiving safe, adequate, and proper service for the portion of the reliability line. The dedicated B.L. England pipeline will be paid for by the owners of the facility, and the Board of Public Utilities will make the final decision regarding the utilities request per base rate adjustment. So tonight's hearing is for you to relate your experience and offer your comments about this petition, and as you heard, the hearing is being transcribed, and it is important that you express your views so that it becomes part of the record, and my office would also like to hear your views. So I'd like to, once again, thank you for attending tonight's hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Ogden. Board Staff, have any opening statements?
No, Commissioner.
Thank you. Now I'm going to open the hearing to the public, and I will be calling names off the list, so again, if one member of the committee, signing sheet, is outside, and again, would come up to the lectern if you would state your name, spell your last name. If you're representing any group, affiliated with any group, if you would state that also, and again, if you would keep your comments as brief as you possibly can so that everyone has an opportunity to discuss. This hearing will end no later than 9:15, so the same three hours that the 3 o'clock hearing was given, so everybody has an opportunity to discuss. First name I have on the list is Marianne Clemente.
Just so you know what side I'm on. My name is Marianne Clemente. That's, I'll spell both names because I'm very sensitive about my first name. M.A.R.I.A.N.N.E. Last name is Clemente, C.L.E.M.E.N.T.E., from Onika Township. I remember coming to this meeting a while ago, and it's really upsetting to have to come again because right now, we're very busy working on a campaign, a political campaign, for a young man that's running for Assembly in the 30th District. And he's the guy that Christie told to sit down and shut up at a Belmar Town Hall. Well, he's not sitting down and shutting up, and neither am I. It's unfortunate that I have to take time away from that valuable campaign to come here and speak, but here I am. I'll say it, "Say it ain't so, Joe," if you remember that phrase from the last time.
I remember you, yes.
Say it ain't so. We had such hopes in you, the way you treated us very respectfully during that hearing, and we felt that we were going to be heard. And then, just a couple of weeks later, the statements that came out of the BPU were like, like we hadn't even been here. So I have to say it again, Joe, you have to listen to what we're saying. And I didn't give who I was representing, but I am a citizen of planet Earth, and that's how I sign in every time when I go to the Pinelands Commission meeting. I am a citizen of this planet Earth. Now, I know that Georgina probably read a statement, and I'm just gonna, I have to reread it because everything about this is so important. This hearing is about giving a home rule in, for these municipalities. That is Pandora's Box that you're looking to open that's going to create havoc in our, in our state. You can't give up home rule to a gas company that they have everything to say about it. How can we even be thinking of something like that? It just, it means the community members of these three municipalities will lose control to the gas company. Zoning, site plan review, and all other municipal land use ordinances and regulations promulgated under the authority of the MLUL, the Municipal Land Use Law, shall not apply to the proposed The elected officials of these three municipalities did not go through a process of seeking input from their constituents because they're all for it. You know, it's, it's like, you know, Christie's got this hold on, 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 on certain areas in terms of corporate, corporate involvement, you know, instead of looking at what's important to the environment and where, where all of, what's going to happen to, to the environment when we allow these gas companies to come in and disturb all of this precious, pristine pinelands that we have here? I mean, the federal government came in, and this was the first natural, national reserve that was created. And we're, we're opening the door to let it just go to pot. And it's beyond me, I mean, with, with the Pinelands Commission, that, that Witten, whatever her name is, is allowed to make a decision on this now because it comes in as a private, private program? This is outrageous. The Pinelands Commission is being undermined, and it was put in place to preserve, protect, and enhance the, the pinelands. What is lost in this discussion is the fact that the Pinelands Act supersedes the municipal land use law, making compliance with the Comprehensive Management Plan of the pinelands essential. Nothing has changed in the application of South Jersey Gas. Nothing has changed. It didn't pass in the beginning of 2014, and they're coming back with the same damn application, saying it's something else. The attorneys, politicians, and senior Pinelands Commission staff have come up with a novel idea to keep the plan and make the application a private one instead of its original public application, which, at that time, the BPU was involved as an applicant. And you are a regulator of, 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 of the utility. It's my problem to me. The BPU in April of 2013 approved a joint petition by South Jersey Gas and the owners of the coal plant, R.C. Holdings, to move ahead with the gas plant agreement. The agency also confronted the gas company in its application for the pinelands, as I just said. The BPU has an institutional conflict of interest and cannot serve in an independent and objective regulatory capacity, given the prior BPU MOA and BPU orders approving various aspects of the project. I hope you see that, "Say it ain't so, Joe." The Chair of the BPU, Mr. Marose, was a founding member of the Energy Coalition, which lobbies for the fossil fuel industry. The political shenanigans and undue influence has been well documented from the Governor's office to Senator Sweeney. The Andrew Wolfe Sampson law firms, it is beyond sitcom. I mean, Sampson was involved in the bridge game. In just two short days, the BPU will hold an evidentiary hearing in Trenton, and it's important that everybody go to that, too. And the three municipal clerks will represent local rights and citizens in handing over land whose power to South Jersey Gas. Finally, I just want to read this little thing. At the annual address to the League of Municipalities in 1967, the President and Mayor of Hawthorne, Louis Bay II, said, "My fellow officials, I don't think I am overdramatizing when I say that the next quarter century will be the time of decision for municipal government as an effective institution in American society. Local government, the historical foundation block which solidly supported the superstructure of this great nation, is cracking under the weight of social, economic, and technical stress unknown and unforeseen by government architects of the past. By the turn of the century, this venerable old foundation, which we love so well, will either have been remodeled and strengthened or condemned as unfit for due habitation, torn down and relegated to the archives of history." That's where we're headed. And I beg of you, Commissioner Fiorelloso, to... I'm Italian, I should know how to do that, but there's a couple of extra vowels in there that I have trouble with. Please don't, don't... Don't, I'm having trouble finding the right word. Don't, we're in despair right now. Don't contribute to that. Please help us save this planet. This pipeline has no business going underneath the pinelands. It has no business being involved at all. I'm sure Jeff Tittle was up here talking about the fact that all the other gas companies going online very shortly. We don't need the energy. This is gonna, ultimately, this energy is gonna go offshore. On that note, I would thank you for listening to me, and I leave the floor to other people.
Thank you, Mary Ann, as I see you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. My name is Andrew Coleman, C.O.L.E.A.M.A.N. This is kind of short for me here. I am the President of a small nonprofit group in New Jersey called the Bus for Progress. We are a group that brings people together, educates them, and gets them involved in their local community to make it better. Our 350-plus members do not support this project at all. We do not want to see a pipeline built. New Jersey is the most densely populated state in the country. We're actually kind of similar to Japan in our density. Our population here is not decreasing. As each person is born in the state, the pinelands becomes even more precious. All 1.1 million acres becomes even more precious to the, to this generation and the future generations to come in New Jersey. The Pinelands Commission holds a vow, a vow to the floodgates. If this project is allowed and a pipeline is brought in, there are many interests around the state that are watching this, and if they see the Pinelands Commission will allow something like this to be put through the pinelands, what is next? What group is next? What, what, what next pipeline is coming down the road? What additional construction is, is ahead of that? Where does it end? New Jersey is a progressive state. We're actually a leader in alternative energy, in solar especially. And, and I am, I'm a union member, CWA 1036, and I see a lot of my fellow union brothers and sisters here. I'd love to see labor used to tear down the B.L. England Plant. It's a dinosaur. I'd love to see union labor be used to put up some windmills off coast. And every time the breeze blows in New Jersey, it's, it's generating megawatts of power. New Jersey should be leading alternative energy, the whole country, and could. The Commission, the Pinelands Commission, has a very proud history of keeping the pinelands safe, and I'd hate to see this 2015 Commission be the ones that open up the floodgates and allow construction. There already was a vote on this in late 2014. This project was voted down. This is a lawyer's scheme to allow this to be voted upon or allow this to come through again, and this is not right. I hope the Commission looks, sees through this and protects the pinelands for this and many generations to come. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your call.
Nancy Klein, K.L.E.I.N. I don't have much to say. Thank you for your attentiveness, and I'd like to apologize for some of the voices I'm hearing in the background that are talking over speakers, which I think is disrespectful to you and to everyone who is speaking. This is an important issue. It's not a party here. New Jersey, thank you. Good my point. New Jersey is the forefront in the United States for environmental issues. People are watching it, like Andrew said. People are watching it, like Andrew said. The Pine Lands Commission was put in place to preserve and protect. And that's what all municipalities and New York Board need to realize. It's the United Nations bias here. And that's pretty damn important in the scheme of things in the world, to be recognized. This state, it's so heavily populated that people don't even know there's 1.1 million acres in the pine lands. They think it's all New York City, which it's not. The gas company doesn't need to do this. Doesn't need to be done. They lost. And it's, they don't want to lose. So they're gonna use every means possible to circumvent rules, break rules, do whatever it takes to get this pipeline built. And that factory driving by, I didn't ever realize what that was. I've seen it. It's really archaic. And it's the last one there. It's gonna end up being a waste of time and money. There's gonna be jobs, but they're gonna be temporary. And jobs for everyone need to be more than just temporary. You need to take a look at it, and you need to listen to people, and you need to get a bigger picture, a broader picture, of what this means for the future. We got a little pipeline, we got a little factory. It's not about that. Ultimately, this will be an open door for development in the pines. Developers will come in and say, "We have a pipeline. We can build here. Let's do it." And they'll bend rules, and then they'll go on, and it will continue. And then we have nothing. So stop and think about it, what this means, not just for right now, but for the future. Thank you.
Ernest Cascio?
It's hard to hear. Say it loud.
Ernest? Is that you?
Yes.
Come on down.
I do have a little hearing trouble. My name is Ernest, E-R-N-E-S-T, Casaccio, spelled C-A-S-A-C-C-I-O. It's settled science that the Beaulieu Land Plant would be more environmentally friendly with gas than the current coal or oil. It's also settled science that the proposed pipeline, along with the valve junction facility, is the only way to transport the gas. I'm therefore asking that South Jersey Industries be allowed to complete the pipeline and turn on the gas. Why? Because it's settled science. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Max Slusher? Did I say that correctly?
No, sir. Slusher.
Slusher, okay.
It's S-L-U-S-H-E-R. Sorry. It's okay. It's happened before, but you didn't.
Nobody ever knows what it's pronounced.
No, sir. I see that. I live at Margate. I was raised in Ocean City. Except for university and quite a few military deployments, I've been within 20 miles of this site my whole life. I'm an economist, do economic forecasting, economic development, strategic planning. And I know that this is a passionate subject, but I'd like to bring another perspective to this. As a local, raised here, and who raised three children here, 65 jobs that make in the top 10% of Cape May County's workforce, we can't afford to lose them right now. And the loss of $5 to $6 million in revenue to upper township would be absolutely devastating. Now, I know that these are dollars when compared to the cost of the environment. I understand that completely. But predicated on the impact to the environment relative to the economic costs, I think we need to weigh here exactly how much we're gonna gain and how much we're gonna lose. Want to point out that this county, Cape May County, its peak as far as population was the year 2000. 14 years in Exeter, we've been losing population. In fact, right now, that population is the level that's equivalent to 1990. That's a pretty good indication economically that you're constricting. There's no, there's no possibilities out there. In fact, I'd put forward that probably one of the biggest exports of Cape May County are its young people. They have no future, no jobs that pay a living wage. This is a tourism economy, we're used to that. But in a tourism economy, where you have very high fluctuations in employment and unemployment, specifically unemployment in the wintertime, it creates a lot of, or at least it's correlated with a lot of negative social spinoffs. It's correlated with family abuse and domestic violence. It's correlated with drug and alcohol abuse. It's correlated with different social negativities that I personally witnessed my whole life. We need to have a balance between good planning and zoning, and government, and the economy. There is a trade-off between the two. And we need to understand that when we do protect things to an nth degree, it ends up costing socially men, women, and children who are directly impacted by those different rules and regulations. So what I'm asking you to do is to please carefully weigh these considerations and understand that if you do decide to close down a plant, which we're doing because we're moving it from coal to gas, which I admit is an old facility, but on the other hand, the idea was to try to reduce the negative consequences of that facility, which I do believe you're doing with the, you're exchanging out with the gas power plant. In the end, it's a balance. And all I'm saying is, from an economic point of view, what we're under stress here with the contraction of the casino industry, and the area as a whole trying to find its footing economically, that you carefully think this out and try to come up with a reasonable approach, because your decisions will impact the 95,000 people in Cape May County and the 270,000 that live in Atlantic County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ralph Clayton? Hello. My name is Ralph Clayton, three-seater hollow court in Beezies Point. My impression was that this hearing was to determine if the BPU would decide if it would be required by the utility to make an application to the zoning board, or if the project could proceed with the authority of the BPU. Most of the comments I have heard have not addressed this issue. I do not know the legality of this issue. The lawyers will probably fight that one out. Most of the negative comments so far seem to have come from people outside the township. We here have lived underneath smokestacks for all these years with the polluting coal, dust, and whatever that contains all of these years. Here is finally a chance to clean the atmosphere up for the people who live here in the township. And all of the outsiders who come in and oppose this, I don't think have to, need, are entitled to the consideration that we are, who live here and who have lived underneath stacks all of these years. My belief is that the majority of the people here in the township, myself, my family, everybody that is in the vicinity, are very much in favor of getting this pipeline done and done now. Thank you.
Okay. The next speaker's first name is Bill, and I can't make out the last name. I think it starts with an F. Is that you?
Yeah. Fosbener.
How do you spell it?
F-O-S-B-E-N-N-E-R.
Okay.
Bill Fosbener, F-O-S-B-E-N-N-E-R, 4-Hillers Drive, Beezies Point, New Jersey. Life resident of Beezies Point, within earshot of the PA system of the power plant my whole life. I'd like to lend my, ask you for your support for the conversion of the plan by allowing the pipeline to proceed through our township. I am a resident of the township and do as well as Ralph Clayton believe that those in the resident of the townships feelings should be stronger than those that come from several counties away. So I'd just like to lend my comments that you support the pipeline.
Thank you for your comments.
Mike Wolf from Marmore, New Jersey, and I strongly support this pipeline coming through. I think it would greatly benefit our area here for reliability and service to our community.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Men, M-E-N-S-C-A-H. Just want to say that I'm for this project for no other reason than the electrical reliability of keeping it down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Carl Mason, Mason, M-A-S-O-N, a Carver Township resident, resident for 65 years, and that's how old I am. I am for this project because we have to have a constant supply of energy. I'm against the windmills because they're too costly, okay? I have solar, but when it doesn't see the grid, it goes out, okay? I ask a lot of people, because you can't get green energy and pay more for it even though you don't really get that. And I never heard anybody say they would do that. I want to say that for reasons. Because anybody in this room could pay more for green energy even though they don't get the hydro or whatever. And like I said, I'm for the pipeline because solar doesn't work at night. It doesn't work when it's cloudy and raining. You get very little of it, and I haven't, and I know that, okay? And like with the windmills, like I said, they were gonna build them off Nantucket Sound for 14 years. Local jobs know they're gonna be built by seamen overseas, shipped over here. Their employees are gonna build them and maintain them. So when you hear them say local jobs, very few from Windpaddle. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Free comment. Ty Helyer? Is it right? Yes, sir.
My name is Ty Helyer. I'm a 25-year resident of Beezies Point. Helyer, H-E-L-L-Y-E-R. 25-year resident of Beezies Point. I think it's a, I support the project to go through as fast as possible. I was here for Sandy. I watched the power plant run the whole time, Sandy. It ran the whole time, no problems. And I don't understand why we have so much problems of getting a gas main there now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comment. George Datzick? Datzick, right?
Datzick.
Datzick. That's D-U-D?
Yes. I'm a resident of Cape May County, and I consider myself an environmentalist. I'm a member of the Sierra Club myself, and I belong to that, and I live here in Cape May County, because it's such a beautiful county with all the open space and so forth. And I understand that the Board has a difficult choice in making between the benefits, and there is some environmental concerns involved in here, too. But I'm here to say to you that I think we believe greatly that this will, putting this through now will greatly increase the benefits by getting rid of that polluter down by the bay down there, and also making more certainty for the, all the people who live in Cape May County that they'll be able to get, continue to get gas. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Lee Diamond?
My name is Lee Diamond. I'm D-I-A-M-O-N-D. I live in Margate. And from what I've been able to figure out, the process is being disrupted here with... I'm trying to make sense of the stuff that I've been reading, this commission and that commission, and it seems like we created this process and we're not being faithful to the process. What the Executive Director of the Pine Lands Commission did was just sort of change the rules in the middle of the game, if I'm not mistaken. And I want to note that four former governors, two Democrat, two Republican, are opposed to this project. And considering that, I would think that we would want to be attentive and faithful to the process that we created. Okay, so why do we have a problem? Why do we have a problem? We're standing on a wetland right now. I grew up on a wetland, Epstein Island. At the time, we had no thought in the 60s, because we had, it was a normal world with normal winters. I mean, maybe one day in four or five months would be warm. And that's not the world we live in. We don't know what the weather's gonna be like from one winter to the next. And when Jim Enhoff stands up on the floor of the United States Senate and holds a snowball, he's essentially making a fool of himself. And it's an embarrassment that we have people in this country now who embarrass us relative to the rest of the world. You look at the oil executives in Europe, and everywhere outside of the United States have just announced their commitment to address climate change substantively. And some people have noted they didn't say what they were gonna do specifically, and I think that that was eminently reasonable. I think what they're saying is that they are going to respect the process of the governments who instruct them on what they should do, as opposed to Exxon, which is acting like the tobacco companies in hiding the evidence and essentially committing fraud. And they're responsible for that coal plant and all these other things, even though they're obviously oil. But it's the same thing. And that coal plant, of course, should not be open now. So I just want to say the fact that we live here on this, well, everything south of, I think, Margate is a wetland. I mean, so you're gonna put a gas pipeline on a wetland? It's flat! You know, I mean, Christie is putting up his sand dunes and, you know, it's just, it doesn't, I don't, just to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. So I appeal for sanity, and I don't think that the gas pipeline is necessary. We, we can, study after study shows, you can conserve, you can cut your energy just by a third with conservation. Now, Jeff Van Drew and Mr. North Ross, they want to put this pipeline in so developers can build houses. And, you know, I think that the wool is getting pulled over the eyes of a lot of people. All these guys can have jobs in insulation, they can have jobs putting solar panels on roofs, they can have all kinds of jobs that would come with a green economy. So they're tied to the past, unfortunately, and I hope that they, you know, learn and find out what's going on. Because I'd rather that this land still be here, and if we get above 2 degrees centigrade, that's, or whatever we're talking about, I think it's 2 degrees centigrade, warming, I mean, that's, we're toast. I mean, we may be toast anyway, but we can prolong it if we stay within where we're supposed to stay according to the science. So thank you for your time.
Charles Henderson? Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
My name is Charles Henderson. I didn't plan to talk today, but I was here at 3 o'clock. I didn't plan to talk today, but I was here at 3 o'clock. So I have a few things I would like to say at 6 o'clock. And just for our own, my reference, I'm old, I have a tendency to forget.
Me, too.
Me, too. Okay? Last Tuesday, I'm having a little hard time. But didn't we have an original agreement between the Pine Lands Commission, the Environmental Protection Agency, South Jersey Gas, and B.L. Ling, a letter of agreement, signed and sealed and delivered? And I think it was seven to six. And through some, whatever intimidation or whatever, one of the commissioners changed their vote, and it turned out to be six to six. If that original agreement had stayed in place, we wouldn't be here today, two, three years later, having one public meeting here. We've had a series of people testify at 3 o'clock. One gentleman was from Gorden Town, obviously a professional, very professional testimony. Gorden Town, and all the way down from Gorden Town. I understand he's here all the time. I'd like to note, hey, he does this for free.
He does it for free. He's a citizen.
Okay, so it's free.
Okay, I'll believe.
It's mainly dressed in a chair.
Next, a woman I understand that appears here regularly, from Metford. What skin is she having again?
Mother.
Folks. I'm not good at talking, excuse me. I'm really not good at talking, and you saw her.
I told you.
Respect to each speaker, the senator's back there, guarantee.
The people that spoke from Ocean City, have they forgotten the black suit on their cars on their boats? Black suit. I know, I have a boat, more than Ocean City. Oh, by the way, I live about a foot in Nine Iron from here. I could walk it. So I am an upper township resident. Now, let's talk about the pipeline going through the pine lands. It's going through on Route 49 and most of it on Route 49 and Route 50. The trees were sacrificed when the roads were put in. Lord knows how long ago, but there are no trees on Route 49. For people from out of town, please take a ride out on Route 49 and see all the extensive development out there. There isn't. Route 50, I live right off of Route 50. I take it into Memorial every day, minimal amount of residential. Perhaps if you look at it this way, maybe South Jersey Gas should ask the state, because these are state highways, for a right of way. Because I'll tell you something, when there's something wrong with those roads, the Pine Lands Commission doesn't fix them, it's the state's responsibility. Okay, it's a state road, not a Pine Lands Commission road. It runs through the pine lands, but that right of way has been there for years and years and years. My township, Upper Township, talk about skinning again. That's the most to lose. If this pipeline is not granted, we lose good jobs. If the, if the plant runs longer than one shift or three days a week, look at the impact. That's, it takes 65 people to run it now. What's it going to do if it runs a little long? There was one gentleman testified, 30 years he's worked there. These are long-term jobs, folks. They're good-paying jobs. They're not fry cooks. They're not flippers. They're not servers. They're making good money, not to mention 6.2 million in lieu of taxes paid to the township. The people that are against this pipeline are taking money out of our pockets, and I don't like it. If I took money out of your pockets, you wouldn't like it either. Let's talk about waiving the rights of these little individual towns or whatever to, for zoning and, if you do that, the anti-pipe people will win. We are talking back to years and years of testimony and public hearings and going through this thing again. I couldn't believe one thing I heard today. One of the people testifying actually threatened, threatened the Public Utility Commission with a long and costly suit. Gentlemen, that's intimidation. I'm not a lawyer, but I know you don't threaten suit. You either sue or you don't. Threatening suit is a form of intimidation. I don't think you will be intimidated. Speaking of intimidation, one of the testimonies was that this is the end of the pine lands. We've got a million acres, not one tree. If the coast down that, if that is going to be lost, we're still going to have 1.1 million acres of pine land. And then they threw in the word fracking. Well, guess what? That's the first time I've heard it. Where did that come from? More intimidation, more threats. My last point. One gentleman brought suit against the Pine Lands Commission Executive Director, I believe. Well, I personally think she did a great job. No, no boos, please. Let's see. The Pine Lands Commission gets $8 million of unrestricted money. Is that still in the deal? I thought it was. Unrestricted. You know what they can do with that money? Next. I can't read it. Okay, the, the, the Environmental Protection Agency gets what? Not what they wanted, what they mandated. They were the ones that mandated. They got rid of their second, their second worst polluter in the state. Sierra Club and all of this, they want to go, go up north, they got enough pollution. Okay. Upper Township gets to keep its biggest taxpayer. We don't have a lot of industry in Upper Township. We had a couple order dealers go out, we're this, that's big business. I don't think our township committee wants to lose it, and I certainly don't want it because that's going to be a big impact on our taxpayers. Then, as I said, we have the jobs. 60 now, maybe 100 later when it's running. And now, South Jersey Gas, which happens to be a nice local business, gets a large and commercial customer. Win, 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 win. Thank you very much for your decision.
I'm sorry, I can't make out the first name, but the last name is Iacona. Is it Augie?
Augie, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Iacona is I A C O N A. I'm here to say that I'm a resident of Upper Township, also retired member of Book 322, Farmers and Pipe Raiders. I support the pipeline to the B.L. Ling plant for the reason of jobs, clean energy, and deratable to the township. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I assume this is a person's real name? Green Man Tom Mahedey? Is there a Green Man here? No Green Man.
Hi, my name is Anthony DeMecurio. That's spelled D as in David, I as in Mary, E R C U R, I of. I stand here representing Parkers Local 255. And I stand in front of you as a resident of Beesley's Point for 20-odd years. When the jobs are finished and done, I would still be there looking up at those smokestacks. I have three dogs who had respiratory illnesses when they were younger. Let's turn the gas on, clean up the emissions, and I want to clean up the emissions for the smokestacks for us and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Raymond Bianchino? Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yes.
All I would like to say is...
Spell your last name first.
B I A N C H I N A. Raymond, R A Y. I would just like to say that I believe that I'm in favor of the pipeline. It's going to make the whole community, it's good for the whole community, not just Cape May County, parts of Atlantic County, and as well, I think it's going to be a much cleaner, safer place. As well, I think we need a backup system that, we only have one gas line running here now. If we have issues, they should have a backup. That's the only thing I want to say. Thank you very much.
Green Man, just came in. Jerry Davis? Is that you?
Green Man just came in.
Jerry?
Green Man, Green Man.
You're the Green Man. All right, let me, Jerry Davis, speak first. Jerry Davis?
How you doing, sir? Hi. My name is Jerry Davis. I resigned in Ocean City, New Jersey for the past eight years. I've had the opportunity to work at Beesley's Point, Washington Creek, and one or two other powerhouses up and down the East Coast. I worked on jobs that changed them to gas turbines, but just the emissions alone, it made it a lot better. And one of the gentlemen back there mentioned about the black suit on my porch. In my car? Yes. Every time they start that thing up, I'd rather see it not there. So we're really favored, the gas line coming in and changing everything over, emissions are being down, the sort of people I am. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Green Man, you're up.
First of all, how about those mats, huh? Just goes to show you that, I'm sorry.
Your name?
Your name? Green Man Tom Mahedey.
Spelled with the last name.
M A H E D Y.
Did you put Green Man in? Is that how you were baptized?
So first, I wanted to say it's a real honor to be here with everybody because I honor those who are in labor and who work really hard, and I do that myself, and my back is strong. So I think what we have to find is something that is acceptable to everybody. I want to honor those who are trying to push us through, and then also honor those who are opposed to it, and see if we can come up with something where we can create green jobs that will not harm anybody. I spent a lot of time in Latin America, and I saw a lot of corporations coming into the countries, and they were taking the water from the countries, and they were exporting it to other places. They're also taking a lot of minerals from the country, and they're exporting to other places. I see a lot of that happening, unfortunately, here in the US as well. A lot of water is being privatized. Even, even the Great Lakes have actually been privatized, and water is being taken from there and exported. So part of my fear is, of course, the gas and what's happening with the frac gas and the workers who are dying in the fields in Pennsylvania from contamination. And of course, for our common parents, Mother Earth and Father Sky are being killed slowly. But just like the mats, we can come back, and we can create something that will revitalize and even have a resurrection because it's clear that Mother Earth is dying and Father Sky as well. But there's also a huge amount of ability here from everybody. There's a story in every single human being that's here tonight, and also, we have a common story, which is the Earth story. We're all on this earth together, and there is an astronaut, Rusty Stryker, I think is how you say his name, but he was, he was an astronaut who was outside of his capsule, and I think he was the first one who saw the Earth as it came up. And he had a huge change in his life from experience. He said, "Look at that, it's one living being." And, and he said, "How can we fight each other, how can we hurt each other when we're all one, one family?" So I just wanted to end it there. We can create a thing, you know, a solution that doesn't hurt. And again, there is a movement in Wall Street, too, to privatize water. It's happening around the world, in Africa, it's happening here in the US. So we have to look, this isn't only about gas being exported, but eventually, it most likely will be a movement to export water as well. And they say that the next wars will be over water as well. And of course, we have this pristine aquifer, which they are salivating from. So once a pipeline comes through, it'd be very easy to use that pipeline to export water as well. So I thank you very much for your time. I do honor everybody here, and it's a pleasure to be here with them.
Shorter guy here. Larry Trulli, last name is T R U L L I. I spent the better part of 39 years down here, living in Seale City, Ocean City, and seven weeks ago, my bride Debbie and I chose Upper Township to live the rest of our life. This issue is very important to me, having been down here in Cape May County virtually my whole life because my grandmother had a home built in 1944 in Seale City, and we had the pleasure and luxury of spending each and every summer down here. I look at the Beesley's Point Coal Fire Power Plan as a necessity to even the lights and the heat that we're enjoying right now. I don't consider myself to be a wasteful person. I don't consider myself to be a trasher of Planet Earth. I respect the opinions of the people in the Earth Movement, although I do not agree with a lot of the conclusions that they come to of that planet. This planet is roughly four and a half billion years old. It was a very long period of time, much longer than any of us could ever imagine, when the atmosphere was acidic and no life could survive.
when the atmosphere was acidic and no life could survive above that. Life was driven under the ocean, and as the planet scrubbed itself, life emerged from the ocean, and here we are today. Cape May County is a unique and beautiful county nestled in the southern part of New Jersey. The one thing that makes this county just unique and beautiful to me is the people. Each and every one, from every wall of life. But I too often hear that the sad part is, we come here to have our children, raise our children, and we export them, because there are no jobs. I understand that putting the gas pipeline over in the Coal Fire Power Plan would double the amount of jobs prospectively of what would be available, and that can only be a positive thing for Cape May County. I also, in retrospect, am aware of the fact that, and I feel strongly now, being a resident of Upper Township and who one day would look possibly to run for public office, that home rule should be paramount in any decision going forward where outside entities would seek to circumvent that home rule. I would hope that you would take that into consideration. And I, like the gentleman before me, was of the impression that that original vote of 7 to 6 meant that the project could not move forward. I understand now from Mr. Clayton that the BPU has been put in charge to ultimately be the authority on that. I would ask in your evaluation, in your decision, that you would look to apply through our zoning board here in Upper Township so that we may have some type of home rule over the project. And I want to say this. Eyewitness Sandy from 34 Walnut Road in Ocean City. I never lost power for a second. I did not lose cable, and I did not lose my telephone. I watched what was going on around me on my television with my wife, and was reporting to people outside of the area. That was not provided by windmills. It was not provided by solar panels. An uninterrupted power supply is paramount to comfortable living. I think each and every one of us in the year 2013 have become accustomed to the luxuries that we have in this great nation. We are a first-world power. We are a first-world nation. I don't like to take steps backward that would make us second-rate in any way. Being the son of a World War II Navy man who was 18-years-old October 30, 1941, five years later, that man whose parents got on a boat from Italy to come across the Atlantic to see the American dream. I am second-generation born in this country, and I am all for projects that would increase the possibility of entrepreneuriness and jobs to Cape May County. And that's all I really have to say. I just hope that you would take again into consideration the home rule of Upper Township in your decision, and include us as best you can. Thank you. Thank you.
Rich Fellows, I live in Tuckahoe here in Upper Township, on the very route of the pipeline. The thing that I wanted to say, the point that I wanted to make tonight, is that I believe that the Board should reject the petition of the company, because I think that the petition is improper. Title 40, as you know, says that there are two conditions under which the company can petition the Board to waive municipal land reuse and other local regulations. The first condition is that the company has been rejected or somehow is aggrieved with the local, with the local regulators. That's not happened, though. They have not gone through the regulatory process with the municipalities. The second condition, and this is the condition under which the petition was submitted, is that the project traverses more than one municipality for the furnishing of service. I'm sorry, I ran out today, I didn't bring Title 40 with me, but I know what it says. This is a high-pressure transmission line that is not going to provide service for these three municipalities. It has one customer, or it will have one customer, at its very terminus, the plant. I'm not really here to speak for or against the plant, or for or against the pipeline, but I believe there's a defect in the process. And I would really like the Board to take a look at Title 40 and read it. Now, there's only that one sentence, "for the furnishing of service," and I went and looked at Legislative at that, and that's what the statute was written for that became part of Title 40. A line that would, well, not a gas line, any kind of utility that would go through more than one municipality to service those municipalities, that's not the case here. It's a high-pressure line. In fact, their application to the Pine Lands says they're not going to provide service. It's just going through the plant. And so, based on that, the petition should be rejected. It's improper. This has been called a redundancy line, you know, that will provide redundant service to Cape May County just in case. If you look at the map, you'll see that that is really not, well, it's just not true. There will be no redundancy south of Tuckahoe Village. You know, this transmission line has got to cross the current transmission line to get where it needs to go. So, they said, "Well, let's put a valve there, we'll make it interesting." That's at the very northern end of the county in Tuckahoe. If that current line fails south of there, you can't pressurize it with gas from the new line. So, that's a little specious, that that, that this will serve as a, or that it's one of its primary purposes for redundancy. That's not really... And lastly, this summer, my church wanted to build a little pavilion, a little music pavilion, too, because we give to children and things like that. And I came to Upper Township, and I began to go through the process. And I had to go through the entire process, planning, zoning, building, permits, inspections, everything. And I didn't like it, I really didn't like it. It cost us a lot of extra money, the project took longer to do. But I will tell you, now, after it's done, and that's all taken care of, it's a, it's a better project for having to have gone through that. It was good and right that we were made to go through that. And if my little church should go through that whole process, I think that South Jersey Industries ought to also. There's no emergency, there's no urgency, there's no good reason to waive local land use. And, as I said before, the petition is improper, and I'll put that in my written document. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
Fred Green, I am a business agent, G-R-E-N. I'm a business agent for Level 322, Farming Pipe Printers, South Jersey. I just wanted to say, I'm here to urge the Board of Public Utilities to issue all necessary approvals, get the pipeline started, because there isn't a negative impact on the environment. And also give clean and sustainable energy to Cape and Atlantic Counties. On behalf of all the hard-working members of Level 322, we'd be proud to support this project. Also to conclude, in response to something else I heard, we all do have temporary jobs in the union. I've been 20 years in this local, and I've gone from one temporary job to another, and I've been a living. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was the last person on my list. Let the record reflect that.
Hey, I'm sorry. I think I was on another list.
And who are you?
May I?
Yes.
Sorry, I think I was the first name on another sheet of paper, maybe it got mixed up.
Okay.
May I go ahead?
Sure.
My name is Jamie Zachariah, J-A-M-I-E-Z-A-C-C-A-R-I-A, and I represent the New Jersey Sierra Club. And I won't take too long, because I know everyone's ready to get out of here, but there's three points I want to make. The first being that this pipeline, which does violate the Confident Management Plan, isn't just going through any old forest, it's going through the Pile Lands, which is a UN biosphere reserve. It's an incredibly important piece of land. It protects 17 trillion gallons of water, this aquifer. And any even small accident will threaten the drinking water for almost all of South Jersey. And I think that is irresponsible to go through with something without a really intricate and detailed process that could make such threats against our drinking water. The second point I want to make is that this pipeline is going to promote water pollution, air pollution, it's going to cause harm to the wetlands, to our open space. And I think it's the people in the Pile Lands, the people of New Jersey, and the Pile Lands themselves, who are represented by Pine Lands Commission, who should be the ones to have a say, and they should be the ones to have a vote. So, taking away the local land use and taking away the vote of the Pine Lands Commission, I believe, is incredibly unfair, and I think they are the ones who should be deciding what happens on their land. And lastly, I want to say that this meeting shouldn't even be happening, because I think we all know this is the same application that was already rejected. And the only reason it's back is because of manipulation of the rules and failure to follow the law, and that this has been a sneaky process. It really shouldn't be here, it should be, if anywhere, at the Pine Lands Commission. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Other speakers, I just want to reiterate that written comments will be exempt until October 26, 2015. They should be sent to Board Secretary Irene Kim Asbury at Board of Public Utilities, 44 South Clinton Avenue, 9th floor, Post Office Box 350, Trenton, New Jersey, 086250350. Or you can submit them via email, board secretary@bpu.state nj.us. I again want to thank you very much for coming out this evening, and have a safe trip home, and I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.